Got the thumbs up. Good evening. It is Wednesday, September 10th at 6:30. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. My name's Connie Schrader. I'm the mayor. And if you've been to my meetings before, I will promise you that this is going to be just like the other ones. We're gonna be jumping all over the agenda tonight. And I need to make an announcement. There are a couple of items that have been pulled, and I want to make sure that the public is aware of that. We will not be discussing work session briefing item number 5A. That has been pulled from the agenda. And we will not be discussing individual consideration items 9M and 9N. M and N. It was the wholesale water agreement and the wholesale wastewater agreement with a developer. I made a call to the developer this afternoon, and the response was, "We are really, really close," but they were still working on some final edits. And I know council wants to approve things once they have been fully vetted and both sides are happy. And so those items have been pulled per their request, and we fully expect to discuss those on September 24th. So if you are in the audience and concerned about those items, enjoy the gift of time. Otherwise, we're glad to have you with us. It is 6:30. We are a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. And the very first thing that we're going to do, as we always do, is our pledge of allegiance. Tomorrow is September 11th, and there's not a person in the audience that doesn't know exactly where they were on September 11th. And it is fitting that September is about first responders month. So I have asked for all of our first responders that are here in the audience, if you are in the audience and you serve as a first responder, please step forward. That's you guys in uniform. Come on up. They are going to be leading us in our pledges. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give these first responders a round of applause. If you would please remain standing. Phil Woods, one of our police chaplains, a local minister, and all-in-all greatest guy ever, is going to give us our invocation tonight.
I don't know about that last statement, but thank you. Father, we want to thank you tonight for the privilege to live in Bastrop. And Lord, for the many wonderful and bountiful blessings that you have bestowed upon our community. And tonight, we ask your direction for the mayor, the city council, the city manager, what does they go through the agenda that is before them. We're praying, Lord, tonight for not only direction, but wisdom from above. And tonight, Lord, we just pray for all of our departments throughout the city. We thank you for those that are so dedicated to our city. And then tonight, we pray for our police officers that at times put themselves in harm's way. And Lord, at times, they have to make decisions in split seconds. Watch over and protect them. And Lord, tonight, we're in an area that we need rain. And we just ask that you send rain to our community tonight. And we pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Pastor Woods, I think your prayers are being answered as we're getting some rain. You forgot to mention that we would like it to not come with torrential dam pour and devastation. So we're hoping the rain takes care of us tonight. All right, we're moving on. I'm on mayor's report. It is agenda item 4A. You with me, Colin? Did a few things over the end of August, and one of the fun things I got to do was the FCI stands for Federal Correctional Institute. They had their 40th anniversary. Councilmember Peterson retired from FCI, correct?
Thanks, Mayor. I started at FCI in Bastrop, and I finished up my career in Adwater, California.
And how many years did you work out in Bastrop?
In Bastrop, approximately nine years.
Yeah, that's a... Most people don't work anywhere nine years these days, Councilmember Peterson. I'm there with the warden and also with Drew Ross, who is from Chairman McCall's office, and we had just a great event out there. Next to that, you see Mayor Protem Nelson and I are standing with Dr. McLendon and Reverend Duchesne at the 133rd Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, for taking the picture. And off to the right, you'll see that I'm with Hannibal, and the two kids that we're standing with had just graduated from the New Hope Christian Academy. They were the first two students to graduate. And there are two individuals that had gotten, made some bad decisions, but they're getting their lives straightened out, and it was really neat to be a part of that ceremony. Colin, if you go straight down, for those of you that don't know, Makoka has relocated out at Community Gardens. And the most important thing about that picture is the young man in the shorts and the kinda aqua and blue shirt, because that's my grandson. And yes, I do get extra credit for pointing him out. So it was fun to be at that ribbon cutting. And then to the right, you'll see the Agnes Street ribbon cutting. And for those of you who don't know where Agnes is, it is behind the new hospital that's being constructed, and it will intersect Home Depot Way at 304. And it was just a great ribbon cutting. We had four out of six council members there and four out of seven Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors there. That was a BEDC project, and you can see just a Chamber of Commerce, beautiful day. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the things that I said I was gonna do between August 30th and September 10th, and I did most of them. I did fail to make the library board meeting last night because I could not be in two places at one time, still working on that skill. The upcoming events on Thursday, the Governor's Small Business Workshop is going on at the convention center. Some of you may be signed up for that. And I want to bring especially to your attention September 19th. We are having our come and go with our questions about the B-3 codes. You'll hear us talking about those a little bit later tonight. The developer come and go is at 3:30, and the public come and go is at 6:30. And when we get our public, we're gonna get them interested in talking to us about everything. So part of the council chambers is gonna be talking about our land development codes, and the other part of the chamber will be talking about wastewater treatment plant number three, if you have any questions about that. So that concludes my mayor's report. Last meeting, we started on this end of the dais, so I'm going to start on this end. Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, Mayor. All I have is, I'm sure everyone does remember where they were on 9/11, and I'd just like to, thoughts and prayers go out to the families. I've been watching them most of the day. But I know we'll always remember 9/11.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Rogers? Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes, ma'am. Members of the council, I want to call your attention that the CAPCOG has recently issued their 2018 air monitoring data analysis for the Alston Round Rock Georgetown metropolitan statistical area, which Bastrop is a part of. The purpose of this project is to analyze ground level ozone levels within our region. And as y'all can well imagine, it's been pretty severe this year or last year because of the high temperature days combined with little high humidity days that help push that ozone down. So they're continuing to monitor that to ensure that we stay in compliance with the Clean Air Act. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Nelson. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proud to say that on tonight's agenda, we have two presentations that represent work from the boards that I am liaison to. One is the Cultural Arts Master Plan that will be presented tonight, and the other one is a memorial tree program from the cemetery board. Now, if you'll give me a few minutes of personal privilege, I'd like to make a statement that I've noticed over this last several months, that we've gotten a little bit lax on our rules and procedure as far as speaking up on the dais. And I would like to request that we get back to our procedures and wait for your recognition before we speak, that we either turn our light on, and if you don't see us, sometimes you've got a lot of things going on, that we ask for your permission to speak.
Absolutely, Councilmember Ennis. Thank you. I will do my best. And it's much like my kids. I have two boys, and they think the other one is my favorite, because that's how it works when you're a parent. And I've been told by this side that I only ever look at this side, and I've been told by this side that I'm only ever looking at that side. So I feel like a bobblehead sometimes, but if you've had your light on for a while, please do not hesitate to say "mayor" or get my attention some way. I know that, Councilmember Ennis, to your point, I know that sometimes it's really tempting to say something to the person that you're sitting next to, and I know that the audience wants to hear everything that we're talking about, and the best way to do that is there's only one person talking at a time. So thank you very much, and I will do my best to make sure we follow that.
The other item is, for those of you who did not look up our agenda packet tonight on the internet, you probably don't know that we have a packet that's longer than War and Peace. It's 1,461 pages. I think the fact that we were expected to prepare that kind of reading between Friday night at 10 o'clock and this evening borders on being unconscionable. And it is what it is, but I'd like to request that we have an agenda item in the future where we discuss length of agendas, posting times, and maybe give ourselves a little bit more time so we can digest this kind of information. I know that we all want to read every page that we've got, and as someone who through the years has railed over and over and over again against the national government and the state government for passing things that are so big they can't read, I don't think we ought to be doing it either.
Thank you, sir. So would your preference be that it be on the agenda at the workshop, and we talk about it, and then if we need to make revisions or a resolution or something? So is that, am I understanding you accurately?
If that's the best way to do it, yes, ma'am.
City attorney, do you recommend we workshop that first?
I think that'd be a wise way to handle it, Mayor.
Okay. You heard his comment. If you'll help us word the agenda item, that'd be great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ennis. Councilmember, was that everything? Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I concur 100% with...
God bless you.
Bless you with Councilmember Ennis on that. I was going to comment on that. I mean, out of 24 years, I've never had an agenda that took as much time, and I still think I missed some of the things that are there. So it was quite a lengthy agenda, and you got it Friday night. I don't know if I got it until sometime Saturday. I just couldn't get it all opened up and everything, too, because it is quite massive. But I would concur that we need to workshop that and try to work it out for the future. As a liaison for the Parks Board, I was really happy to say that I made my first Parks Board meeting, because there had been conflicts in the past with the dates, and I was really pleased. I think it's gonna be really fun to work with that organization, with that group. They've got a lot of great ideas, and they're doing lots of great projects, and I'm hoping to work with them on some additional projects. And that was quite an adventure. I just wanted to commend the city manager and the staff for clearing up some of the tree limbs. I mean, I'd had several citizens that had commented about tree limbs and branches that were still there from the storm, and it's a process of getting all that taken care of, because they can't pick up as many at one time. And I explained that to our citizens, and they...
Councilmember Jackson, you've lost your mic. You need to turn your mic back on.
Okay. There are still a few that are remaining, but quite a few. I mean, in fact, a large size amount of the branches and limbs, I can't talk now that my mic is back on, but have been removed, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to thank the city manager for my calls about that and taking care of that. And that's all that I have at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. One thing, counsel, that we've got to be aware is, one of the reasons that we have long agendas and big packets is because we're doing a lot of work. And rewriting all of the regulations and the Cultural Arts Master Plan, several things that we're doing are kind of one-off, and it's a bit of a perfect storm in timing of all of it happening. That does not mean that we can't do a better job of breaking it up, and we may end up having to have, you know, more than one meeting or whatever. And I believe, Councilmember Ennis, that's the very thing you want to have a discussion about, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Okay, that's it for council member reports. City manager?
I wanted to share with the community a couple of things. The first is Bastrop has won several awards for things that we're doing, and that's really exciting. The Texas Downtown Association for their 2019 awards awarded Best New Construction Under 50,000 Population to our very own Spring Street Dental, which is a wonderful recognition for what they've done with that building. And then the Best Promotional Event Under 50,000 Population went to us for the Main Street Pop-Up Street Program back in June. And the next one I am particularly proud of, the Texas Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors gave the City of Bastrop the Kirk Uglan Programming Impact Award for the City of Bastrop MLK Walk for Peace, Justice, and Equality. And the intent of this award is to demonstrate to our membership officials and our constituents that cable programming can have a positive impact in our community. This award honors the jurisdiction that most influenced people's perceptions by touching their hearts and minds, or who by the very process of creating has enkindled community spirit toward the realization of the goals of its citizens. The program need not be the most artistic, slick, or of high technical quality, but its content or its creation must have made an impact. Since such programming may take longer than a year before the impact may be demonstrated effectively, there are no restrictions on the cable cast date of any entry. So I thought that that was huge kudos to that video. And if you aren't remembering that, we had Dr. Jackson to speak. We had a diversity of community members to speak and talk about the impact that Dr. King had on them and has had on our community. So it's wonderful that we were recognized for that. And then last but not least, I want to recognize two promotions that we've had since our last meeting. And I want everybody to appreciate, I tell y'all all the time, what an awesome council we have. But it truly is wonderful that when we have a council that recognizes the work of staff and says to the city manager, "We think you ought to promote." Particularly in a community that has not had assistant city managers in the past to recognize the work and say, "We think these guys are worthy of promotion," that's awesome. So since our last council meeting, Chief James Altgilt has been promoted to Assistant City Manager of Public Safety and Community Support, and Trey Jobe has been promoted to Assistant City Manager of Development Services. And why don't we give these guys a round of applause for a job well-earned. And it was wonderful that, I know what a great job they do, but for y'all to recognize that and for them to now get the titles of the work they were doing is tremendous. So this is a huge moment in their career, and it was wonderful that y'all nudged me in the ability to get that done. Thank y'all so much.
And I'd like to thank Brandon for the great article that was in the paper about that. And yes, we will be talking about the budget later. It's already been written in the article. They got the title, they didn't get any dollars. So just in case somebody thinks that we are suddenly over budget because we tripled their salary, that did not happen. To be quite frank, she's given them, the promotion is a title for work that they were doing, and it acknowledges the work that they're doing. And as I pointed out in the quote that was in the article, "Everything's about the community, and we think that this is a huge step towards improving customer service and the ability to respond to our community." So that's the reason that we did it. So, good news, yay yay. Let's get to work.
Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, I have my light on, I'm sorry. No, I just, with the city manager's report, I just wanted to say that I was quite surprised to hear about the MLK award, and I'm just really pleased to see that happen. And I'm just, it kind of floored me a little bit to hear about that. So I'm really honored and glad that that did happen, because it was 30 years in the making, and thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Sorry I didn't see your light. Okay, Colin, as I promised, and those of you in the audience, the first item that we are going to do is 9K. I have four people signed up to speak, and the city secretary's bringing me some more. That's also 9K. All right, I chose wisely. All right, so 9K is on page four. It is on the bottom of page four, if you're following along with the agenda. The item reads as follows, "Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-40 of the city council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, related to Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving a 2019 amended and restated service and assessment plan, including fiscal year 2020 assessment role for the district attached as Exhibit A, ratifying and confirming prior actions of the city council in connection with the district, resolving all matters, incident and related thereto, providing for an effective date, and move to include on the September 24th city council meeting for a second reading." City manager?
Yes, ma'am. Before our attorney, George Hyde, comes up here to make his presentation, I wanted to provide some perspective. I think that it is supremely important for us to kind of go back in time, if you will. Two years ago, well, actually, it's been two and a half years ago, I started and was being asked questions about the Hunter's Crossing pit. And I tell this story, that I had staff come in, and I asked what I thought was a fairly basic question, and each one of them had items marked in their pit book, and they weren't the same items. And they sat and argued for about 30 minutes about what the answer was. And so I thought, well, that's a one-off. So I asked the second question, and that didn't go much better. And so in visiting with Councilmember Nelson, or Mayor Protem Nelson, I came to understand that there was some real history. So under your direction, we hired George Hyde to do a forensic audit on the pit. And we all went into this believing that this would be a six-month exercise, never dreaming that it would be a two-year experience. I think that that background is important, because there was a lot of records that they literally touched and combed through to come to tonight's presentation that George is going to present. The culmination of that two-year journey is a win-win-win-win. It's a win for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, because for many of the citizens that live out there, they have wanted some basic questions answered relative to maintenance. And we've not been able to answer those questions about maintenance, because there was some question as to who actually owns the property. One of the things that will be culminated through the adoption of this amended service and assessment program is placement of that property in its ownership, so we can now begin to answer those questions. It's a win-win-win for the local government corporation, because they are charged with the service and assessment plan, and a lot of citizens would like to pay their assessments off early and have never been able to have a definitive answer. George is going to provide that this evening. I want to take a moment, I believe she signed up to speak, but Misty Ventura is here, and she represents the developer, TF Hunter's Crossing LLC. And in today's time, compromise is really a dirty word. We have become very comfortable with winners and losers. But when TF Hunter Crossing bought the pit, they came to the table with the expectation that we were going to be partners and that we could work that out. And they have really given a lot to get to a point for the 500-plus homeowners in Hunter's Crossing to have a win for the commercial aspect of the pit, to have a win for the multifamily portion of the pit, to have a win. We had a public hearing on the 19th of August across the street at the convention center. Everybody at Hunter's Crossing was notified. We had a number of people participate. Lots of questions were asked. We've had a public input session, where a lot of information has been forwarded to George, and we've made some corrections based on the information that we got from our citizens, which was exactly the intent of that. So, long story short, what George is about to present this evening is a culmination of two years' worth of work and answers to questions that we've been waiting, in some instances, 14 or 15 years to get. So with that, George, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you.
Quickly, though, George, before you get started, I want to make sure that the audience understands what's going to happen. He is going to make a presentation. Council is going to ask him if they have any questions. We will then open the public hearing. I will call all the people who have signed up for the public hearing. And because it's a public hearing, because it's at a posted agenda item, George will be able to interact, will answer it. Our goal is for everyone to have every answer to every question that they need, and then we will move on with the other items that we have to do. This has been posted, and there is a specific order of things that we need to go through. So with that, Mr. Hyde?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. It's a pleasure to be here again before you. First of all, just to provide some focus and framework, Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code regulates the establishment and operation of public improvement districts in Texas. And so when you look at where is there a rulebook, it's Chapter 372 of the Texas. That's where you go when we're dealing with public improvement districts. So in December 2003, the City of Bastrop created the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District and assessed an $11,961,260 lump sum lien or levy to pay for the improvements to the property within the district and a portion that $11,961,260 of cost to the properties by the type, by residential, by commercial, by multifamily. And through the amended and restated plan, you will see that we've also made a subsection on an undeveloped lot, since it did not have an existing type, but it retained its multifamily designation from the 2003 assessment. So right now, we're dealing with checks, so-called, that were written by the city council in 2003 that we're now having to find out how to pay for. So the state law requires an ongoing service plan to be prepared and presented to the city council...
George, I don't know that you are in sync with your slides.
Nope. This should have been...
So...
Am I pushing the button correctly? Let's see.
Colin, can you get him back to the beginning?
Is this forward?
There you go.
Right. Is the big button forward or backward? That's still not the very beginning. It's like it's backwards. What am I doing here? It's the bottom button, not the big button. Okay? Well, then, I'm missing some slides, then. Pit development status, is that slide up there? I can go through it with or without the slide. I just wanted to use it in addition. Yeah, there are two slides that should be here. And I'm not clicking at all. Yep.
There we go. Thank you, Colin.
Okay. Thank you. So, slide one, we talked about just 372. Slide two is the 2003, we created the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District. And that, well, looking to it. Am I hitting a button wrong?
Okay, go back to the small button.
Okay, there we go. Maybe I'm hitting it and not knowing it. I call that a short between the instrument operator, so I apologize if that's a problem. So the lump sum, 11961, was to be used and a portion within the area shown in that slide. State law requires that an ongoing service... State law requires that an ongoing service plan be prepared and presented to the city council for review and approval. That service plan, in accordance with 372, must cover a period of at least five years and must define the annual indebtedness and the projected costs for the improvements. The plan must be reviewed and updated annually for the purpose of determining the annual budget for improvements. The slide here shows the last issues of development that have recently occurred, which is Bear Hunter Drive. The green area is the improved part, what is complete, the blue area is the remaining, the only piece of improvement remaining in the PID. That, upon the approval of the service and assessment plan, will be in place to begin in 60 days and is anticipated to be completed in 180 from then and that will be all of the improvements that the PID was designed to be responsible for. So, the assessment plan must be included in the service plan. And so the service plan has to do with the improvements and how that's going to go, the assessment plan is how payments are going to be made in that $11,961,000 and how that is assessed by parcel of land in the district and as determined by the method of assessment chosen by the municipality back in 2003 when the levy was created. So, first of all, these are levies. What 372 says is that a levy constitutes a lien against public property and remains until paid. So, we start out recognizing that in 2003, money was allocated against the property of which everyone who currently lives in the PID or owns property in the PID had a debt to pay when they bought the property. All property owners purchase a property subject to that lien and that lien is released when the levied assessment is paid in full or voluntarily reduced to zero by agreement. And our new service and assessment plan has both of those options available to the individual owners, to pay off the capital assessment immediately, to pay off the installments and to the extent there is any additional funds owed at the end of the payment period, which we have defined, the developer has agreed to waive any additional cost past that date. So, the total capital assessment summary for the entire PID as of today is that there is a $1,148,468 unpaid capital assessment in the aggregate in the commercial area, there's a $1,623,609 in the aggregate in the multifamily area, in the undeveloped multifamily lot is $2.472 million and in the single family, the aggregate amount owed is $2,131,000. The total amount currently owed in PID is $7,376,072.2. As you heard earlier, this was an $11,961,000 PID. $7,367,000 is currently owed, now 15 years later. We've made $2.2 million of assessments payments. The difference is the negotiated compromise that your city manager discussed earlier with regards to what we've done in order to reconcile the PID costs because of something very, very important to this analysis. This public improvement district had deferred triggered PID fees, PID assessments. Let me explain what that is. Is that the 372 of the Texas Local Government Code provides for an opportunity to postpone an obligation to pay the debt. And that was a provision that was included in the 2003 PID service and assessment plan that said, "Mr. Property Owner, Sabine Investments," who was the original developer, "you don't have to pay a PID fee to reimburse yourself for the money that you're going to expend on your property. We're going to hold off and not make you pay those costs. And for the commercial and multifamily area, we're going to not have you pay those until you sell them to a third party." That's the provision in the 2003 plan. For the residential, we're not only going to not have you pay it, we're not going to have the builder of the homes pay it, so it's not going to start being charged until such time that property is sold to the first original resident. So, if you have a plan for a PID to run 25 years for payments, but some payments start in '05 and some start in '06 and some start in 2017, how do you count the 25 years? So that was one of the reconciliation issues that we've done and in doing so, we've removed almost $2 million from the obligations of the property owners in the PID by reconciling the PID for purposes of change in use, such as lot 3B was a large commercial tract of land that during the application of the project needed to be dedicated to drainage. So when it became drainage, it became a non-benefitted property. And so the original assessment for that disappeared. It was no longer available because the use of the property, the property type, became drainage, not residential, not commercial, not multifamily. So, during that process is how we removed the original $11,961 to $7.37 by only paying $2.2 million. That's what pulls that gap, is the work done in order to reconcile this in a way that demonstrates the costs available based on the current property use. So, in 2003, when the PID was created, so the service plan has the complete Bear Hunter Drive, the PID was designed based on projections, number one, projected costs, engineer estimates of cost to build the infrastructure, and estimates. The estimated cost plus interest will be this, the estimated cost of this plus interest will be that. And so in exhibit F, it details in a spreadsheet all of these related costs and expenses and the contribution of $1.2 million by the property owner in the land that was being donated into the PID and all of that is reconciled and that's how you come up with the $11,961,000 item. When doing that, those estimates over time, in 2005, in 2006, in 2008, should have had a service and assessment plan reviewed by the LGC and promoted by the city council, but that was not done. There was a number of issues that occurred with the plan originally, the advisor on the plan was Sabine Investment Company, the developer itself, since it owned all the property. After a few years, that transferred to the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, which had its first meeting in 2008, seven years, or five years after the PID was created. And so a number of transitions occurred during that time period to get us to the point we are. In 2011, there were two certified public accountings that occurred through the administration but never presented to council, where 696 packets of reimbursement applications were reviewed and analyzed by independent third-party certified public accountants and recognized and acknowledged that the developer at that point had spent over $17 million in actual costs in developing the improvements, of which they had an $11.96 million reimbursement opportunity through the district. So they had spent more money than they were getting from us to complete the project without interest. There was no interest ever accrued in the public improvement district since 2003 when it was adopted and there is no interest adopted in the amended and restated service plan. So we're talking about a debt of at least $11 million that has gone 15 years, of which you are getting interest-free. And it's not a water bed, when I was a kid, that's what was always the interest-free one that was on television. So, when you look at this, you have an updated assessment payment plan because of the staggered way that people game on board, so that everyone gets an opportunity of approximately 25 years to pay off their debt, without that lien becoming an unscheduled lien that is sitting on your property like a mechanic or material man's lien or other form of lien, which then becomes a cloud on your property type. So by extending the payment schedule, it doesn't change the amount you owe, it doesn't change any of the costs associated with the PID, it just creates an extended payment schedule so that you have an opportunity to pay in accordance with the assessment plan for a period that allows you to extinguish your debt. Think of it like a house mortgage. If you had a mortgage for 30 years and at the end of the 30-year mortgage, your payments didn't pay off your mortgage, then that remaining amount becomes a debt that's in your deed records that you're going to have to pay off if you ever sell the property. Well, that's what would have happened without this payment schedule reconciliation. The other part of it is, is that especially with the single-family residential properties, if we did a cross-checking analysis and the first residential property PID assessment was paid in 2005, if you take the existing schedule, which had a 6% elevation each year, they've paid roughly about $3,500 towards their capital assessment as of today. In the current capital assessment plan, every property owner, their owner remains, becomes a level amount of $4,180. When you pay that through 2029, you have completely paid off your debt to the PID. However, the service and assessment plan showed that the original PID assessment was $9,907 per property. The payment schedule only provided $8,979. The most anyone in Bastrop, a resident there, will pay, the people who started paying in 2005, the very first PID payments, they will pay $7,775 and their PID debt will be extinguished. Not the 87, not the 99, the 77, 75. That would mean that they've been here and have received the benefit of the improvements from 2005 to today. Individuals who didn't come on board until 2010 or 2012 or 2015 will pay for the same period of time until 2029 for that PID amount, but their total value benefit will be more than somebody who was here for that long, because they've only been able to encourage or enjoy the benefits of the enhanced provisions for a shorter period of time. So they pay for a shorter period of time and then that debt on that property is extinguished. So, the reallocation of $4,000, and let me make sure that number's right, I don't want to misquote it. $4,180 provides every residential property owner with a reduced amount of funds owed on their lien.
George?
Yes?
Can I ask a question real quick? If you come in now and buy a property-
Yes, sir.
Are you going to be working on the $7,000 amount or the $4,000?
Under, like, right this moment, before this is passed?
Well, say this is-
If this is passed, then you will owe $4,180 as the PID cost and if you pay, which has now become a level $380 a month that doesn't increase for the remainder period of time, if you pay that off, then you will pay that 10 years and so you'll pay roughly, what is that, 38 plus 380, about $4,100.
Okay, thank you.
And you're done.
Can I ask the other question? What if we don't approve this, how much would you owe?
Well, the original assessment under exhibit F is $9,906 per person, or per property.
So, if we don't pass this, they come in now, they owe $9,000, blah, 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 blah.
Minus whatever the existing property owner, because all of the bid property has been purchased by a property owner, so their monies have started, it's just that we've created now a fine, defined deadline of 20, the payments in 2030, which count for 2029 because you pay them in January, right? So, the 2029 assessment will be the last assessment done in order to extinguish the debt owed by the residential property owners, which they will pay between the time it's assessed around now and January 31st of 2030.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Miranda, your questions are answered? Or this question is answered, there may be. Councilmember Jackson?
What about the commercial customers? I mean, that's with the single family, but how does that play out for them as far as assessments and payments and costs?
Right, if you see, and I'll flip to the next one in just a second to answer your question, if I can just throw these up real quick and then I can answer your question with the next slide-
Okay.
With your permission? Thank you. So, what we have here is a tiered program where in 2030 is when the single-family residential become extinguished, 2034 is when the commercial becomes extinguished and 2041 is when the multifamily and the undeveloped multifamily lot extinguish. So now you have a roadmap built into your service and assessment plan that shows you where the light at the end of the tunnel is, which you have never had before in your service and assessment plans. So, the assessment summary is provided in full for the entire lot in this one chart. And each one of the properties is outlined throughout the service and assessment plan to show the various costs and areas. So, you'll see that the first horizontal group is labeled "commercial lots." It has the tax ID number with Bastrop County Tax Assessor Collector there, it shows the .07 per square foot assessment rate, which was done in 2003, Scrivener erred in 2004, but fits, and then .0317 square foot for M&amp;O. So, so far, we've been talking about the capital assessment, which is the cost that we have to collect to reimburse the developer for the 11.96. The other part of the PID is the maintenance and operations. And the maintenance and operations is what we've been working on so diligently to get to a point where we know what is ours, because that deed that we're talking about is transferring more than 25 easements, rights of ways and these simple properties for hiking bike trails, for fencing, for all of these things, to the local government corporation, so that now it is in their possession so that they have the ability to maintain it. Otherwise, it would be like me going to somebody else's house and working on their house. That's a problem and that's been a problem that's delayed some of our repairs. So that's part of that service and assessment review for the 2020 fiscal year, is to evaluate your standard of care for those properties now that we are in possession of them, evaluate what costs are associated and then maintain them at that cost that the district has determined appropriate for enhanced services. So, that is the O&amp;M assessment fiscal year, that is that money. The capital assessment fiscal year 2020 installment at 071 square foot, that is the capital assessment money. And each one of those numbers represents a commercial property that shows how much they're paying this year and every year, because that's set at a level rate until 2034 and then the maintenance and operation continues for the PID. There's been a misunderstanding throughout the time period of review of this PID in that a PID has some type of expiration date. A PID has an expiration date exactly like a municipal corporation. At any time that the municipal corporation wants to vote itself out and dissolve its corporation, you can do so, but guess what you have to do? You have to pay your debts before it's effective. And here, if the property owners, 51% of the property owners of the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District signed a petition and presented it to the city council, asking to dissolve the PID, to make it stop, they could do that and you could do it. But it would still continue and assessments would still be issued until the amount of money owed in these liens is paid off, because a former council in 2003 made a development agreement and a promise that the courts and the laws make you pay. Because the investment of the property owner, when they did the investment now, is reaching over $18 million on your promise of 11.96 getting back. You've paid 2.2 of that debt and so we have to find a way to pay the rest. Now, if all of the property owners wanted to pay all of their liens off, they could. And in doing so, it would exhaust the debt and if all of the debt is exhausted, then the PID could get dissolved and you would no longer have a public improvement district. And so, but not everybody is in a position to spend the totals, the $7.5 million necessary in one swap. So, this one chart shows you the assessments for single-family, which is $380 per lot, the assessment for O&amp;M is $2316 and so every residential property is going to get an assessment of $40316 to pay. And then the undeveloped lot, which incidentally is owned by the developer, who last year and again this year will pay $164,757 in PID assessments and O&amp;M assessments for the PID. And that undeveloped lot will continue to pay, or have an opportunity to pay it, until they pay it off in full in lump sum or until 2040, which would be a 2041 payment. The multifamily lots are then shown there at 54 and 52 per year and then the commercial development is there by lot as well. So that is, in essence, your assessment plan in summary. Your five-year service and assessment plan currently has a stable, standard amount. There is discussion and work on the ability to issue PID revenue bonds, which are done independently from the full faith and credit of the city and the city has no obligation to pay those costs, but those costs would be designed so that the $7 million that's owed will also be used, a portion that would be used for any interest on those loans, on that debt. So there was no additional cost to the property owner and there's no additional cost to the city or to the local government corporation in the course of issuing the debt. And so we have designed this so that many times in most districts, when you issue that debt, there's another half percent interest that is added to your PID fee. Not here, not in Bastrop, we're not going to do it that way and we've got an agreement in that stead. So this is your five-year plan, I would anticipate that every year you should see this and you'll see it go down each year, it will modify based on your needs. And so the example I gave to the local government corporation, for instance, is to say that the Bastrop Hunter's Crossing PID decided that it's in the best interest of the general public to change all your fencing out and go to solid concrete fencing. That's a little pricey. So, it says, "I'm going to up the maintenance and operation fee so that people can have their solid masonry fencing," but guess what that means? That'll probably last 30 or 40 years with very little maintenance. So then after that one payment is made, your maintenance fees go down for the remainder portion of the PID because you paid it in lump sum at that point, you got something that had very little or no maintenance and so then your costs after that are lower. You have experienced a higher M&amp;O fee, but you dropped it a few years ago in about 2013, 2014 time period from the original maintenance and operation cost that was originally assessed. What that did is you originally assessed in lump sum an allocation of $5.4 million to cover your maintenance and operation costs during the life of the PID. You've not needed to do that because you've only spent about 1.3. So you have some additional funds and you've been very conservative in your maintenance, so you should have some additional funds available to be able to- so you should have some additional funds available to be able to improve those as the standard is determined for your community. So the service plan in Section 8 also has a provision that's very important, is that this process is a ministerial act of the city council. Once you go through this process, you have to do the public hearing, then you have public response comment, then you have what's called an objection period, where individuals who own property in the Pid, if they want to address the city council and say, "You know what? I already paid this off. I don't owe a Pid. Here's my documents." You can pass, it's called passing, you pass on that item, and you can make a modification to the Pid specifically on that item if somebody demonstrates proof to you that a change is necessary. However-
Is there a deadline on their ability to do that?
There is. I was going to say, they don't have to do it tonight if they weren't prepared coming in here to do so. They have until September 30th, where they can file in writing to the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation a petition that says, "Here's the mistake on mine." And then we will review that, and we can make allocations until September 30th, under the 30-day administrative process to deal with those concerns. So it doesn't stop you from going ahead forward with this Pid and adopting the service and assessment plan, which you are required to do on an annual basis by law. It still gives an opportunity for individuals who may have some concern to get those concerns addressed. Now, in that regard, state law only requires us to provide 10 days' notice in the newspaper that we are going to have this public hearing. Bassett's done so much more than that. It had a town hall meeting that was very well received. There were at least somewhere between 50 and 100 people there, my best guess, who spent two hours going over the Pid and discussing it. Then the service and assessment plan was released. They had from the 19th until the 31st to come and make comments. They met with Tracy, they sent emails to me, they sent emails to the HC Pid, and we responded to those individually to address their individual need. And then today, we're having a public hearing to provide that additional time. So we've done over and above the legal obligations for purposes of transparency and to make sure that we have public input. And in one case, the owner of the Toyota property provided us with an issue with regards to the time of purchase. So each Pid assessment is for the year. And so if you have a purchase that occurs in the middle of the year, then you are allocated a partial Pid cost that you have to pay in the closing. Well, in this case, that Pid cost was not reflected in the last year of payment on his assessment, and we were able to correct that. And that was the, you know, the rough $42,000 correction that was made in order to ensure that that number was accurate, because of that change, that 2008 purchase time period did not get collected at the end. And so that makes, that individual, which I'll show you here in a minute, or actually, I didn't put it up here, but I can, instead of having a full Pid payment- Let me get it backwards. There we go. Say, for instance, if his payment is 19,86296, I just picked one, then that payment goes down to $34 that last year, because we were able to reconcile that partial payment that didn't get caught in 2008, 11 years ago. So that's the level of detail that we've gone. The accounting support was provided by a senior vice president of Briggs and Vassalka, one of the largest Texas certified public accounting firms, who are regularly utilized as expert witnesses, and provided all of our accounting support. And then that information was then tested both with the developer and with legal counsel, and all of the numbers we've provided to you today have gone through that process. So Section 8 provides, but we need to know notice of what the error is. It's not just, "I don't like this, I don't want to pay this anymore." We need to know what you think, what is our calculation error? What's the calculation? What do you think your Pid should be? And we'll happy to explore those with you, to try to make sure that everyone is being treated appropriately. And so we'll meet with them and get that resolved. And Section 8 provides that in your service and assessment plan going forward. So every time you do this in the future, people still have that opportunity to come in and talk about it next year. So my direction at this point is that we conduct a public hearing on the proposed assessment, we conduct the objection period by offering to hear, and then evaluate any objections raised by any proposed assessment property owner, and then we consider the levy of the assessment as a special assessment on the property as presented in the ordinance.
Councilmember Rogers?
I'm sorry, I had a question on the last screen where you said each year. I understand they have the September 30th now, but what did you just say about each year they all have? That same 30 days?
Right, this is now a part of your service and assessment plan. And so next year, you'll need to review your service and assessment plan and evaluate those, and have another process just like this one. And when you do that, there will be another 30 days from the date that the notice comes out, that 10-day notice we talked about. There's 30-day period after that for individuals to come and talk to you about their Pid assessment.
Okay, so for some reason, they miss it this year, next year they'll still have that same 30-day window to correct it all over again?
Well, from that year forward. You can't come back and say, "In 2008, I had a problem that needs to be fixed. That one's over."
That's why I wanted to make sure. Anything from before now has to be fixed before September 30th this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they understood that was what you were saying.
Yep.
George, go ahead. Mayor Proton Nelson?
Well, if there's going to be discussion as a property owner, I have a conflict of interest, I'm going to accuse myself from the dice, I file the appropriate paperwork with the city secretary.
Well, you are excused. Thank you, Mayor Proton Nelson. So George, it is the elephant in the room is the document that was provided in 2013. Let's talk about that.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So let me kind of go back into what this document appeared to be. A board member of the local government corporation sometime in 2013, at about the time that they're looking at assessments, prepared this and presented it to staff by Board Member Ken Kesselis.
Okay, that's Kesselis.
Kesselis, I'm sorry, thank you.
And my question right off the bat was, who was staff?
We don't know.
Did the Hunter's Crossing, did they have any staff that worked for them?
It would have been some members of the city administration. I mean, I think when, at that point in time, the city manager was assisting and operating, as we do today, with the local government corporation.
Okay.
Incidentally also, the certified public accounting records that were done around that same time period were done, addressed to the city council, but they were sent to the city manager, but they were never considered on a council agenda. So they were never brought to the council for evaluation or review, even though there was a complete certified public accounting that was never on a single agenda. I read them all. So there was a great deal of, I would say, disconnect with regards to communications between the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation and what it was attempting to do. Fortunately, there was one action also to try to allow a delegation of administrative authority to pay all reimbursements to the city manager. But that didn't go through. So there were some really interesting things when you go back and look at those, as to what was, what were they thinking at the time, and what was the reasons or purposes for those actions?
Mr. Hyde, we're not Pid attorneys, and so the level of interest in that detail is probably varying and dwindening on the council. So we need to get to what was in the document. There are some folks who've made some assumptions, or they're reading the document. We need to really be clear about if there was anything in there that was incorrect, or if there's assumptions that are being taken out of context or whatever.
There's a great deal of information here that has value, but it is very general in nature, and if you're looking at a 2013 document in 2019, there is a great deal of communication loss in those values to today's Pid. The service and assessment plan here that has been vetted, this is actually the 39th version, V39, of the Pid during the negotiations, because of the changes and the evaluations and the double-checking that we did. So first of all, it talks about the Pid levied an assessment against the property located in the Pid boundaries. I said that today, that's the same. It goes on and talks about, "What is the Pid current pay? When it was formed, the Pid had an initial capital investment in the range of approximately 12 million." Well, they already knew in 13 it was 11,900, but you know, this again, it's not, it's loose, approximately 12 million. It goes on to discuss the capital component of the Pid collected to reimburse the developer for those public improvements that are identified in the service plan. But importantly, in number three on page four, it says, "When does the Pid end and what happens after it ends?" This, I am sorry, but I have to identify it as misinformation, because specifically it says, "The Pid expires in 2027/2028." So we don't even know which year, and in 2013, that it expires, 27 or 28. That is, was the plan. The plan was to create an O3, have it last 25 years, sell all the property, get all the Pid fees paid immediately, get all the infrastructure done, bond the property and get out. But that's not what happened. Credit crisis happened, all sorts of issues happened within that time period. And so when you read this carefully, you can see, before that time is what he says, "The developer will have conveyed all of the various public improvements to the city." That hasn't occurred yet. We talked about the special warranty deed, where these conveyances are still pending today. And thus, thus, well, that thus didn't occur. At the time the Pid expires, the ongoing operations and maintenance of these public improvements will revert to the city and will be paid for and managed in the same manner that other public improvements handled by the city. That's a general statement of agreement when there is a Pid that dissolves after a 51% petition and doesn't have any debt. But you still have debt, and the Pid statute 372 specifically says, even if you dissolve, you have to pay your debt. So the Pid may have intended to expire during that time, based on the documents, but that wasn't the fact. It just was not an accurate statement of the law, nor was it an accurate statement of fact, because Pid payments were deferred in that deferred trigger that I talked about earlier. "The city has not been asked to take any action that might extend the life of the Pid beyond that approved by the city council in 2003. It is uncertain at this time whether any extension is allowed by law, but none has been sought in this case." Pids go on forever. It's almost like a country western song. But pids go on forever unless you dissolve them, just like cities, just like other, it's a district that is created by statute. When it talked about the debt, it continued to talk about the 11,961 million, which is the accurate statement that was there, but it says, "This amount was what the assessments were predicted on." Predicted. Demonstrating that the original assessment was projections and estimates, and they were not exact, and needed to be exact once we had as builds, and we knew what those costs actually were, but that didn't happen. So there's a great deal of work here with regards to providing general information that is consistent with the law, but when you actually provide specific information, it falls apart.
Okay, council, any more questions for Mr. Hyde? I know, it's, we reserve the right to ask questions. Do you want, one of the things I would like to do is open the public hearing, have the peoples speak, let George answer their questions, and then if we have questions, we can come back. Councilmember Brindis, you look like you might be, you can't decide whether to turn on the light or not. You okay with that process?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And George, as we move through this, I've pulled up the order I'm supposed to go in things, but I'm counting on you keeping me legal. Don't let me do the wrong thing.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I am doing these in the order that you turned them in, so they're not in alphabetical order, or my best friend, or whatever, they're in the order that you turned them in. The first person who is signed up to speak is Kathy Peterson, and I believe you live at 218 Pheasant Trail.
I was just-
Ma'am, I need you to come to the microphone, because the people at home want to hear what your question is, too.
Basically, the gentleman answered most of my questions already, so that was good.
That makes me so very happy.
One of the questions I still have remaining is, he's saying that we're going to be paying $380 a month until the Pid expires in, what was it, 2030?
It's a year.
It's $380 a year.
A year, okay.
That's your capital assessment portion.
Okay, George, you have to talk into the microphone, too, because everybody wants to hear the answer.
I didn't want to spit on her. So the 380 is the annual assessment amount, which is no longer elevating by 6% every year as the current Pid makes it elevate. So it stays fixed at 380 until the payment is complete in 11 years. And so that is the capital portion, and then the M&amp;O portion is what the slide identified, I think, to be a total of 46, $406 total for the 40316. And so you're there on the third column of the exhibit, $23.16 is your portion of the M&amp;O, or O&M, I'm sorry. I'm sorry if you need to, but, and then the installment is $403.16 this year. The $23.16 can go up or down each year, depending on how much maintenance you need in the Pid, the same way your maintenance for your house goes up and down, depending on if you get a new air conditioning.
Okay. So my question is, the $403.16 for the year, the 380 is for the O&M, I'm sorry, the capital improvements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that is what I am paying on my property taxes every year right now on the Pid?
I think it's what you're paying on your residential lot, and the taxes levied, he's going to jump up if I say something wrong. The taxes levied by the Bassett County Appraisal District, when you get your property taxes, there'll be a line item. One of them's going to say BISD, one of them's going to say-
Right. One of them says Pid, right.
And one of them's going to say the Pid, and that's where that assessment is going to be.
And just for clarification, I want to try to make sure-
Use the mic in your hand, that's why you-
I'm sorry, just for clarification, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is an assessment, it's not a tax. Taxes are done by governmental entities. This is an assessment that is done under Chapter 372 in Texas, okay?
Well, it comes on the tax bill, so for me, it's a tax.
It's still green pieces of paper with dead presidents on it. It's money out.
So basically, this is going to increase my taxes $55 a year from what I paid last year.
I don't know the answer to that. George?
Well, depending on the amount of the M&amp;O assessment from last year, I believe that is the same amount, isn't it, Tracy? You know, yeah, so that's the same amount. The 380 did elevate from last year 6%, but it stops elevating from there forward.
But it's been elevating 6% every year, hasn't it?
Since 2004.
So it's been going up, this year it will go up again, and then it will stay there. Does that make sense, Ms. Peterson?
Yes. Okay, my next question would be, where can I go to find out exactly how much my property has paid into the Pid over the years since 2003?
Back to you, George.
Tracy will have a spreadsheet with that information available here at the city.
He means Tracy Waldron.
Tracy Waldron, the chief financial officer, and we will have that. When did you start paying on the Pid?
I moved in two years ago.
Okay.
But I want to know how much has been paid in since the house was built.
Yeah, so it would be-
Because you quoted, what you quoted.
There is a schedule in the old Pid that started at $200 a year.
Okay.
And after the first three years, it started to increase by 6% every year, and it was continuing to increase for the last 15 years.
Okay, George, let's cut to the bottom line. Is there a spot that the residents in Hunter's Crossing, do they need to provide an address? What information does Tracy Waldron need to be able to answer that question?
She has, she has the original service and assessment plan with the schedule.
So Ms. Peterson calls her and says, "Hi, Tracy Waldron, I'm Kathy Peterson," and Tracy can give her the answer.
We have a spreadsheet that shows how much was paid each year by each property.
And that they need an R-number, they need an address?
Yeah, it would be-
They need a last name?
Your tax ID number for your property.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Waldron, everybody's wanting you to stand up, because you've become their new best friend. There she is! And she's got cards, and her number's 332-8823.
All right.
332-8823, Tracy Waldron, and because you have to be named Tracy to work for us at some point in your life, because we got lots and lots of Tracys, and they spell them all kinds of different ways. You are looking for Tracy Waldron. And Tracy, do you, they need their R-number, or their address, or their name? What do you need?
Address.
Address or R-number, and R-number is a number that you get on your property tax statement. Is that helpful, Ms. Peterson? Excellent.
And then on your sheet that you handed out tonight before the meeting started, on the Agenda 9K-
Yes, ma'am.
-it says that you're going to meet again on September 24th for a second reading.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain that a little bit for me?
One of our requirements by just our entity is we have to have two readings of ordinances. So tonight is the first reading, and on the 24th will be the second reading.
Okay, and by reading, are you-
So, that's posted, and you can see the full assessment plan that's posted as a part of the packet. But when we say first reading, it's, we're doing that right now.
Okay.
And it's based on that packet.
And then how many other readings will there be?
That's it.
Just two?
Thank God, there's only two. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The next person that I have to speak is Robert, is it Reitz? Robert Reitz, who is listed an address as 600 Congress, Suite 2100, Austin, Texas. Mr. Reitz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Yes, my name is Robert Reitz. I'm an attorney in Austin, Texas. I represent the village of Hunter's Crossing, and I'm also here on behalf of the Preserve at Hunter's Crossing, a new development that will have 120 units. The village is 182 units. We represent approximately 300 units that are coming online here in Bastrop. Also, Mr. Liriano, who owns Lear Tech's Properties, has asked me to speak on his behalf. He wasn't able to make it. We have so many problems with this proposal, we categorically reject it and think it needs to go back to the drawing board, and it has to be dealt with in a manner consistent with the way we've seen this thing operate for years, which has been not in compliance with the law. I think Mr. Hyde acknowledged that, that from the day after 2004, they have not followed the law with regard to handling the annual assessments and updating the assessments and the plan according to law. Law requires it to be done first on a five-year plan and then updated annually, which it was not done from 2004 until now. Now, we've got numerous problems, and they've asked me to say, one of the first problems is, is this PID is supposed to continue throughout until 2040 because of the multifamily. I represent the multifamily aspects of this thing, and there's no reason for this thing to last till 2040. That gives the opportunity for the city council to keep the assessments for operation and maintenance applicable to all property owners until that point in time. So, even the single-family residences, single-family residential owners will be subject to the operating and maintenance part of the assessment until 2040. I don't think that's been clear with regard to this presentation. The second problem has to do with the starting point of this PID in 2004 and the failure of the annual assessment plan to be done. When we purchase a property, you purchase a property based on getting and making an offer, based on the fair market value of the property, and then you go to a title company, and then you find out what liens are against the property. They give you various documents and various payoff amounts. No payoff was provided at that point in time with regard to us, and we were only told, including by Forestar themselves, that read the documents and figure it out yourself, which just goes into, basically, there's numerous ways to interpret this thing. When you, and the 2004 assessment, that being the only public document that is filed in the deed records at the time the purchase occurs. If you're a purchaser of the property, you would look at those documents, determine what lien is on the property, and make your purchase price accordingly. Based on this assessment, our costs will increase tremendously over the period. We still have yet to figure out exactly how much it is. It's maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of $350,000 to a half million, or three-quarters of a million dollars for just the village alone, let alone what the other properties are. In an email today, I was given a corrected amount with regard to what the Lear Tech's property is. It's still not correct, and yet we are given very limited timeframe with regard to review this. We started asking the questions, what the payoff was going to be, starting two years ago, and the city could not respond to us. Because there's numerous different ways you could interpret it, why is it not just taking the least amount? Because the opponent of this whole PID was Forestar. Forestar designed it, Forestar drafted the documents, Forestar operated it, Forestar did not enforce the statute in order to make the annual assessments so it would be clear and unequivocal how much the property owners would owe at any point in time. The statute clearly states that at any point in time, a property owner can pay off the PID assessment, the capital assessment. And if you look into a study, thoroughly study the 2004 statute, there's numerous components of that assessment whereby you can determine a payoff amount. Why it was not provided is beyond me. This has taken two years of negotiations in order to get to this point, with this happy days type of methodology being presented to us that we're supposed to be thrilled to pieces, when in fact, we've been told a package of goods all along with regard to Forestar not disclosing what's going on, and then later on, after they sell the property, their successor in interest is now making claims of a tremendous amount, additional amounts owed. We can't accept this. You need to go back to the drawing board and figure out how this thing got in such bad shape and what is proper to protect the citizens from increases of pay. It is supposed to be la-la land with regard to how great this new development is with regard to the settlement. But what we are understanding is, is this thing was done under the pressure of litigation. And when you're under the pressure of litigation, you're under, you're likely to give up a lot of things. One key aspect of this is, we, the property owners, have been in contact with these people and were never given the opportunity to give our opinions, our thoughts, and what we wanted out of this thing. So, therefore, we categorically reject this thing. We think it should be sent back to the drawing board and started over. If I had the opportunity to spend a half hour to rebut everything that's on these things, I could show you numbers right out of the documents that would indicate to you where the mistakes are and how somebody who comes forth and when they're trying to purchase property would determine what is the proper amount that should be assessed. I'm glad to take any questions.
Yeah, I have a couple, but do any other council members, anybody? Do you agree that it's $11.9 million?
No, if you look and study the original assessment, it was really closer to $7 million with a $4 million embedded interest expense the way it was. And if you study the thing thoroughly, the way it worked was, is they backed out the interest in their allocation to the commercial and multifamily. They left the embedded $4 million, their proportionate share of the $4 million in for the single-family residents, but from the standpoint of the multifamily and the commercial, they took it out, made a capital improvement assessment of, it was 90 cents per square foot for the commercial, and 87 cents per square foot is the capital improvements portion. Then they did an additional, quote, "assessment and the line items" that you could pay it off over 25 years, that if you interpolated it, it came to a 6% interest. So, therefore, it was clear with regard to what the allocation per square foot was as a capital improvement that was payable at the time the property was going to be transferred from Sabine, which is part of the confusing factor. Sabine transfers it to Forestar. Or did they? That's one of the questions you don't get out of this thing, and that is, when did the assessment start? They sit there and say that they started when in 2004, but not until the property is sold from Sabine. Then Forestar shows up. Should it have started in 2004 or when the property is transferred to somebody like my client? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I was going to ask you, because you were, you apparently not big friends with Forestar. I understand that you're not happy with them.
Well...
But the documents that created the PID were Sabine, so I was kind of getting lost in the, and you, the thing that's...
Sabine, Sabine transferred it to Forestar, so therefore, Forestar became the successor in interest, as far as I can tell with regard to this stuff. So, therefore, Forestar takes it over, and they could have, every year, gone through the Hunter's Crossing local government, done the assessment, taken it to the city council, and any changes with regard to interest rates, additional costs, anything could have been done. If you go and you look at this stuff, and when you purchase a piece of property and you're given the only thing, it dates back to 2004, if you, it's in stone at that point in time. If you had somebody come to your house and say, "I estimated I'm going to have your thing fixed for $1,000," and they show up 15 years later and say, "Well, it's really $2,000. I just didn't get around to following what the law says." Are you really going to pay them $2,000? That's what's been going on here. Because it's all Forestar, Sabine, et cetera, shaking one hand versus the other, the counting's never done, it's never publicly disclosed, we could never find out. The staff couldn't find out, and it's easy to see that they came up with numerous different answers as to what the payoff is. Is that any way to run this shop? No. And this does not correct it.
I appreciate that you have discrepancies with it, and part of the problem that we're at is, there's a little bit of woulda, coulda, shoulda, right? I mean, I wasn't working for Forestar, I didn't not do the assessments every year. You weren't around, you weren't not doing the assessments every year. We, one thing that, because I'm looking for common ground, we agree it was not taken care of correctly over the last many, many years. Can we agree to that?
It's obvious.
Okay. Well, good. So, we have something we agree on, and then now, the next thing we can agree on is, it's September 10th of 2019, and we got to do something to move forward.
And if there's any question with regard to any part of this thing, it should be interpreted to the benefit of the property owner, because the burden is on those people who were responsible at that time, whether it be board members, city council members, whoever, that if they wanted to protect their interest in making sure the payments took care of whatever obligations there were, they should have done it at that point in time.
In 2004?
In anywhere along. Because annually, they could have changed the assessment. They are saying they can do it now.
Okay.
15 years later.
Okay, I understand. My other question is, have you submitted in writing your concerns? Because I know that you were at the August 20... Thank you, August 19th meeting. Have you submitted in writing your concerns?
At least, I sent those concerns in, in the forum, and then just today, we got some type of response, and we haven't had time to assess it and determine it, but I...
Okay, but, and I don't need, but I just need to know, have you turned in, in writing, all of your concerns with this document?
Not all of our concerns.
Are you going to be able to do that by September 30th?
Don't know. And I'm being honest with you.
I would think you'd be motivated to do that.
They've had two years to analyze this stuff and determine what it is. We are now looking at money, this stuff, and many of the information that we've only had for a couple months. If you want me to tell you exactly where it was, I think we can get that done by September 30th.
Okay. All right. So, we've got a little bit of common ground, not a lot. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Reitz? Councilwoman Rogers?
I do have a question. You had thrown out these, the numbers on the square footage of the commercial and the multifamily. On those rates, without trying to find George's screen, are those the same rates as what is in this document now?
No.
Per square footage?
No. No, you have...
Not the total, just how much you're going to charge per square footage?
No, I don't believe they have.
May I, Ms. Peterson?
Yes, go ahead, George.
So, the discussion, if I understand Mr. Reitz accurately, is that... He's saying that what he's trying to suggest is that there was a, there was a formula that was used to come to the current assessment, which placed a disproportionate amount of cost on the multifamily properties and the commercial properties in the PID. That was something done in 2003 that was adopted by the city council by legislative, as a legislative act. And so, in 2019, that legislative act is something that is indisputable and undisturbable legally. Now, what they're trying, what he, and so, that's one of the disconnects that we have, is that he is suggesting that the assessment or the levy has been altered. The levy that started in 2003 that identified the amount of money on each property has not been touched, except to waive certain costs in the reimbursement of those funds. So, we've not made any more money, because that would require this legislative body to issue a levy against properties that are currently there. And that is not before the city council, your staff, and the developer has not requested that to occur. So, the levies that have occurred in 2003, this is just an apportionment. And with the adoption of this service and assessment plan, it provides Mr. Reitz's clients with exactly what they want. If we go back to, well, that chart right there, if we, that's the installment chart. But if I go down to the current amount due, if they want to pay those amounts, they will no longer have a capital assessment cost. On the second part, which is the operations and maintenance portion, the operation and maintenance was publicly noticed and adopted in 2003 to be $5.4 million. You could have blown it the first year if you wanted to spend $5.4 million, or you could let that last as long as you want it to last. But right now, there is no additional risk associated with that, because that levy of 5.4 that was apportioned to the properties is the maximum amount provided under this PID. So, you have allocated that each year at $23 for residents, and then the various percentages at 30.317 cents per square foot for both multifamily and commercial property. And that was the allocation that was a reduced allocation from the original M&amp;O amount from 2003. So, and that occurred in, I think it was 2015, if I'm correct, right around 2015. So, when he talks about increasing costs, there are no increased costs. Next year, you can assess the entire remaining balance and make people scream that that would be the cost for the M&amp;O if you have a justification in your service and assessment plan to do it. So, there have not been any additional costs to any property owner in the PID, and if there is, there has to be a subsequent levy, which we are not asking to do.
Councilwoman Brenner?
This may be a question for you, George, or Mr. Reitz. I don't know. Does his client's assessment go up 6% just like the residential every year without passing this?
No, and it did not. It was a flat per square foot calculation based on the number of square feet of property they own in the district.
So, my understanding then, from what you just said, is they don't have the 6% escalation in the old plan?
That's correct. Not for commercial or multifamily.
Okay. Thank you.
So, they have an amount per square foot for capital, and that amount per square foot for capital is the same or not the same?
Yeah. For commercial, if you look at the, at the one that is up, it shows over where rate, it shows the ID, and then...
Yeah, I can't see those numbers, and I don't have those slides.
I'm sorry. It's .071 square feet for commercial capital assessment. It's .0317 square feet, which is the amount per square feet for the operations and maintenance assessment for commercial. It's the same operations and maintenance assessment for multifamily, but in multifamily properties, the capital assessment is .068, so it's slightly less than the commercial assessment.
But the rate per square foot for multifamily in 2003 and the rate per square foot of multifamily in this service plan is the same number?
It's the same, it's the same number. It has not changed.
Do you agree to that?
I'm sorry, with regard to, you said the multifamily? I'm not sure what the question is. Please...
What she's asking is that if you take the 068 and you times it by the square feet of your properties, and then you multiply that for 25 years, that will show the total assessment for each parcel.
You're saying that's what the total assessment is, and we don't agree with that. That's because the original assessment had a capital portion and an annual assessment portion. The capital portion was substantially less, i.e., it was, it was a discounted amount. You had an interest factor imputed in that thing. So, therefore, when you start talking about 22 more years at $37,000 a year, that equals whatever it is, and it should be approximately half as much, because we should be able to pay off that. There is this notation that there's no interest on this thing, and that's not true with regard to reading, reading the original 2004. There's an imputed interest, because they have a capital portion of it, and then they have an annual assessment amount. That's probably why there's such confusion with regard to this stuff, because you've got two different ways that you can interpret it.
Okay, you two are very entertaining, and it's a lot of fun, and I'm glad I didn't go to law school. But if, Mr. Reitz, if you'll indulge me, I would like to call up the person number three who has signed up to speak, because she's the attorney for the developer. And we've been using the developer's name in vain quite a bit, so, and I'm not saying that you're done, and if you, if she says something, you can come back up.
She's the successor in interest to the developer, Forestar Sabine.
I understand, I understand. So, this is Misty Ventura at 9406 Biscayne Boulevard in Dallas. Ms. Ventura, help bring some clarity to this whole situation.
Yes, ma'am. Misty Ventura, on behalf of the developer, T.F. Hunter's Crossing. We've spent quite a few minutes talking about what's been done wrong, and I want to spend just a few minutes talking about what's been done right. There are some things that have been done absolutely in compliance with law. Chapter 372 of the local government code is your PID-enabling statute, and that statute provides a process for creating a PID that involves a petition of the owner, public hearings, and notices, and that was done absolutely in compliance with law. The second step in that process, again, involves a public hearing, again, involves notice, and involves levying assessments. a petition of the owner, public hearings, and notices, and that was done absolutely in compliance with law. The second step in that process, again, involves a public hearing, again, involves notice, and involves levying assessments. That was done absolutely in compliance with law. When those assessments were levied in 2003, it was done in compliance with law. Because it was in compliance with law, it created a lien on all of the property assessed. That lien stands before all private money and behind only taxes. So, that lien has a priority in front of all private debt, and that's why in 2003, the assessment ordinance showing the lien amount was recorded in the deed records, and that's why the plats that were recorded in the deed records and approved by this community reference those liens, reference those assessment amounts. When you look at that 2003 ordinance levying the assessment in compliance with law, you have to be able to pay that assessment off in lump sum. Any owner in 2003, or 2004, or 2005, or today, has the right to pay off their assessment in lump sum. They may, with the pleasure of the council, if the council elects to let them pay in installments. The 2003 assessment had two options. Those two options were based on a legislative finding of benefit that evidenced benefit based on public improvements, public improvements that were fact constructed, that in fact cost over $18 million. The assessments levied were capped, as George Hyde pointed out, at $11.9 million. There was an option to pay one rate or another rate. The option to pay one rate was in lump sum. As soon as an owner chose to make installment payments, the validly created 2003 assessment that was levied created an alternative formula. That alternative formula is the one that George has been talking about for oh, 30, 40, 50 minutes, in a long time, on August 19th. That assessment has not changed. That levy that was done in 2003 is the exact same levy that we're asking you to validate tonight. We're not asking you to levy it, because it was validly levied in 2003. We're asking you to give the owners the option to extend the payment period. As George has pointed out, 372 of the local government code provides a mechanic on how you create a PID, and it's the same mechanic on how you dissolve a PID. It is an unfortunate misnomer that folks believe in error that PIDs expire. As a legal matter, that is not true. What expires, in this instance, is the 2003 grant of an opportunity to pay in installments. And it was important to George that we not only honor the 2003 assessment, not only honor the 2003 formula, not only honor the 2003 cap, but not have a punitive effect by saying to folks, "Up, your time's up. You got a big lump sum payment. Pay it now." He said, "That, that doesn't feel right. We need to give folks the opportunity to pay longer." So, all those folks that don't want to pay till 2040 their capital assessment, they can pay today, and I'll say thank you. We don't have to have the capital assessment paid in annual installments. It can be paid in lump sum today and every other day. And that is why I would respectfully request that you honor the work by your staff, by your professional team, by the developer, by the predecessors that sat in your seats in 2003, and acknowledge that there is a valid assessment levied against property, and provide an opportunity for the win-win-win compromise that everybody has worked so hard to achieve. If you choose not to honor all that hard work, what you're saying is not that the assessment goes away, not that the PID expires, not that people don't owe the money. What you're saying is, pick up that 2003 document, figure out how much you owe and pay it, because the lien does not go away. 372.018, pinpoint cite you to the statute, says expressly, "An assessment once levied is a lien until it is paid." Until it is paid, not until some point in time, until it is paid. My client has invested a lot of money in public improvements, $18 million. They had an expectation, when they made that business deal, that a portion of that money would be repaid. They have compromised and compromised in the spirit of being a good neighbor and a good steward, and we would respectfully request that you honor that compromise and move forward by accepting the work that's been done by your professional team, and approve the ordinance before you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Counselmember Rogers?
All right. So, just make sure I understand, between all these attorneys that are telling me they know the best, boy, like mom knows, dad knows, grandma knows. Okay, so let's say I have spot R 52, 56, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
In 2003, you knew how much that spot of land was gonna pay in levy?
Yes, ma'am.
And right now, no matter how much I've paid, and how much I haven't paid, that piece of land still owes that exact same amount, even if, if we accept this.
So, let's, let's be careful here, because an assessment is levied in lump sum, that amount hasn't changed. What was levied has not changed. But that assessment is reduced by payments. So, if you paid anything, or your predecessor entitled paid anything, that number is different, because it's less what the payments are.
Oh, I understand about paid towards the debt. I'm just saying the debt itself is the same.
The assessment, the assessment is the same. Yes, ma'am.
Today, and it'll be the same tomorrow. If this passes, it'll be the same.
The formula is exactly the same.
So, whether I paid or not, doesn't matter. I'm just saying, how much I paid for that car is gonna be the same.
The levy is the same. The levy is not changing.
So, it's only the vehicle on how I'm paying it?
Yes, ma'am.
Has changed, not the type of car, just...
You got it.
And, and the, are you done, Counselmember Rogers?
I'm never done.
No, go ahead. Want this to be done. And the idea of there's more time, it doesn't mean that you have to keep paying over time. It gives you more time to make a total payment. So, if you get it paid off early, if you really only have a couple thousand dollars left, and in four more years, you're paid off, then you're done.
Yes, ma'am.
Regardless of the fact that your neighbor may be paying for a lot longer.
Yes, ma'am. With respect to the capital piece, I don't want to lose sight that the assessment was levied in lump sum, and there's an O&amp;M piece. And as George pointed out, you could pay the O&amp;M piece, but why would you? Because the system, city has a history of reducing it over time. So, but, but you have the option to pay both pieces off in lump sum, because it was levied in lump sum.
Okay. Any, any more questions? All right, Misty. Go ahead. Counselmember Ennis?
This applies to commercial and multifamily as well?
Yes, sir. It applies to all of the land in the PID benefited by the $18 million worth of public improvements that were installed, whether that is residential, commercial, multifamily, or undeveloped property. It applies to all benefited property within the PID.
So, today, the gentleman's clients owe a certain amount?
Yes, sir, they do.
And if we change this, or we don't change this, they still owe that amount?
Yes, sir, they do.
And it's all extending the, essentially extending the pay?
Yes. And, and they can choose to pay that amount now, or they can choose to pay part of it and protest part of it, just like taxes. But just like taxes, if it's due and it's not paid, it's subject to penalties and interest.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to say Misty, and I want to call it, it's Ventura, isn't it?
Yeah.
I knew I shouldn't just say Misty. Okay. The next person signed up to speak is Linda Nunez. At, you have box 1431. I assume you live in Hunter's, in Hunter's Crossing. So, if you could please give us your, at, your physical address and...
Sure, 335 Bird Dog Bend.
Okay, I need you to talk into the mic.
335 Bird Dog Bend.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have several questions. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand a lot of this. But why weren't we advised, when we, when we first purchased the property, why weren't we said, "By the way, you owe this amount of money," or "You're going to owe this amount of money for this PID"?
Well, there, there are a couple legal points where that would occur. First of all, when you, if you do any of your own due diligence, and you look at the deeds or the plats or those things, some people do that, some people don't, there are going to be references that show that, that the district has created. In addition to that, there is a closing document. It's a notice that says that your property is subject to an assessment of the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District. And that would be in the closing records that you had. And in that closing process, you'll also get what's called a title commitment. And in Schedule B of every title commitment, it'll show any liens associated with the property. And if you have a good title commitment done at the time of your sale, there would be, it would show that there was a Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District assessment, subject to the property, which goes, you know, because it, it goes before your mortgage, because like, as, as Ms. Ventura said...
Would it show the amount? Because I don't remember any of this online title commitment.
No, because, because the amount of the, the maintenance and operations changes every year, depending on the need up to the cap, it would have that reference, which would then have you come to the city, or make a request to the city under public information for a copy of the assessment ordinance, which would provide that information to you.
Just as a point of information...
Got to get to a mic, Misty.
As, as a point of information, when you're purchasing your home, you get a tax certificate. And that tax certificate is going to be your best evidence of the taxes and assessments owed on any property, in this community or any other community. So, in addition to all of the information that George provided, that's another good place to look for the number.
And, and actually, on your closing statement, there would probably be an allocation of the assessment. Like, if you bought it in the middle of the year, there would, based on last year's assessment, you would have, you would have paid some, or they would, you know, the buyer would have paid some, or, or the seller would have paid some of the assessment for the, for that, end of that year to be paid, just the same way your taxes are.
Right. And I look at most of that, so I'm really surprised I would have missed it all. I'll have to go back and look at it all again, because I'd like to honestly, and I wonder, I imagine somebody has looked at that, at people's deeds, and made sure that that was on there? Okay, I hope so. Another question. So, this has been sitting idle from 2003 until now, apparently. What about all the people...
No, that's, that's not an accurate statement.
Okay.
Because...
Maybe I misunderstood.
People have been paying in, correct, Misty?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, they have been?
Over here.
Good.
And one of the things that's a little bit confusing, because, because we all get that lovely notice, the little love letter from the appraisal district, and sometimes people pay it separate from their mortgage, and a whole lot of people get a book from their mortgage company that says, "You're paying this much a month for the next year." And then the next year, they send you a new book, and that PID assessment fee is in that payment. And a lot of people just know they're paying X amount of dollars for their house payment. And, and you really, you know, you don't write, thank goodness, you don't write nine checks, one for house insurance, one for the bank mortgage on the house, one for the school taxes and that kind of thing. So, for a whole lot of people, it's just inside their house payment, and it's, it may not be something that you, that catches your eye.
So, we've already been paying this over here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It, and I'm not trying to get personal, but if you have a loan on your house, and your taxes are paid a part of that, and you don't write a check separately, you've been paying on this since the day you bought the house, and the mortgage company's collecting it, because the mortgage company's paying it.
Okay, it goes with escrow.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Why don't we reduce the PID? Probably late in the game, but we're building that Bear Hunter Drive that nobody uses the road to nowhere. Why don't we not finish it? I'm not sure why we started it to begin with and reduce that.
Well, it was originally platted, and part of why it was originally platted, it, there's things like the first responders that we had at the beginning. We gotta have access in and out, and property that's vacant to you now is eventually going to have development on it. So, then, there's a need for the roads to be able to access all the property.
Additionally, because they've already spent several million dollars more than the 11.96 that we agreed to reimburse, if we took it off the plan, we would still owe 11.9 million dollars. And so, so it would be giving away something that, that would support our roadway system in the community.
And I guess my last question is, we're supposed to turn in, in writing any concerns by the end of this month. Where does that go? Where do we turn this in to?
It should be addressed to the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, and you can turn that in here.
Here to...
To City Hall.
Okay, City Hall.
Or our good friend Tracy Waldron.
Tracy Waldron.
Tracy Waldron.
And I've got that phone number.
When all of us fails, give it to Tracy Waldron, okay? Okay, Ms. Nunez, that help? All right, excellent. I have Blake and/or Casey Watson. So, I don't know if y'all are drawing straws, or who, who wants to talk, but you're at 1:15. Have Alina Trail? Did they bail? Going once, going twice. Okay, no Watsons, but we tried. City Secretary, do we have anybody else signed up for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
All right. I am officially closing the public hearing, which means we're on step two of six, Counsel. At the close of the hearing, we need to hear and pass on any objection to the proposed assessments. What does that mean, George?
Yes, ma'am. So, if, if there's any property owner who has a specific objection they'd like to bring that says that these numbers are not right, and these are the proper numbers, and they want that to be evaluated and acted on right now, now is the time for them to bring that to the board.
Now, and/or between now and September 30th?
Right. Well, once, once that's done, this PID will be, again, evaluate on the 24th. So, if we have those between then, and can act on them, and there's changes that need to be made, we can make those for the 24th. Once the PID is adopted, that would be the amount, and if there is an error in that amount, then we can modify a refund with regards to those payments, which is what we've done in the past, in, in case there is an issue.
Okay. But for number three, the idea is, has anybody submitted to us, this is the number that I think it should be tonight?
Right, and, and some basis, some reasonable basis for you to consider.
And some basis, yeah. And I don't, Mr. Reed, do you have anything to submit tonight? You have to come to the mic to answer.
I did not come prepared to give you the actual number. I can have that.
That's fine.
Not, you know, certainly within a day or two to go through that.
That's fine. We just, we have to pass it on. If you have something, I would encourage you to get whatever you can in writing as fast as you can.
Where do you want it submitted?
Tracy Waldron.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Number four, amend any proposed assessment if warranted, and that was if somebody had turned in something, and we could take action on it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Moving on, Counsel. We're at pass the ordinance to levy the assessment. This is the first reading for the service plan that is attached and a part of our packet. That's where we are. Correct, George?
Well, we, we provided a substitute.
Yes, because it has the $42,000 credit to the Toyota property.
And if necessary, I can explain that correction, if there's a question on it.
So, Counsel, the, the document that you got at 1218 today matched the document that you got on Friday, with the exception of the $42,000 of credit, because information was submitted that changed the timing that he talked about within the year of the assessment. That's why a $42,000 credit was issued to the Toyota property. So, that is the assessment plan. You've heard from many lawyers, as Counselmember Rogers pointed out, and what is clear to me of the common ground is, the assessment that was levied in 2003 is not going away. Whether we pass or do not pass this ordinance, that is a statement of fact. If we pass the ordinance, we've brought some finality to some things, but as in all things, should one not agree, there are other measures and means and steps and other folks that will get to decide who's right. So, do you have any other questions for Mr. Hyde, for the city manager? I'm happy to entertain a motion. Counselmember Rogers?
Okay, I just want to make sure. If, if we don't pass this, if we don't vote on it, we don't pass it, the levy total's gonna stay the same, except for at one point, there'll be a big payment that's due, no matter what.
There'll be a balloon payment that everyone will face.
No matter who you are.
No matter when you bought the property.
Residential, commercial, multifamily, you're still gonna owe it, and you're coming to collect it. coming to collect it if we don't pass this, giving them some leeway.
Actually, Ms. Mayor, if I may, the, trying to pull the, after all objections have been heard and the governing body has passed on the objections, the governing body by ordinance or order shall levy the assessment as a special assessment on the property. Therefore, now that you've gone through the completed process, because this is an assessment, you have a ministerial duty as a matter of law to pass the ordinance. It is no longer within your discretion to pass the ordinance. It's like a plat. If it meets all the obligations and the requirements, then you shall pass the ordinance. That's the state law, Chapter 372017, and so I recommend passage of the ordinance as a ministerial obligation of this council.
So if we don't get to vote, we have to pass it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's just like a final plat. You need a motion and a second, and we're going to vote.
I understand that, believe. It has to pass.
Yeah, because it has to do with a land use issue, it's very similar to the plat obligation. You've met all of the administrative requirements. This is an assessment that doesn't go away, and therefore, the state law says that it is not within your discretion at this point to approve or deny the assessment. And you still have the ability to correct errors or those kind of things with regard to the assessment. And so state law, at this point, says that you have a ministerial duty to approve the service and assessment plan at this step.
So my understanding is, they've checked all the boxes, so since they've checked all the boxes, we have no grounds to say no. Is that how you're saying it?
It's like a final plat that's met all your subdivision ordinances, and you go, but I really still don't like that. If they've met all of the ordinance, they've met all the ordinance.
So I move to approve something we don't have approval of.
Is that a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-40?
According to the attorney, I have no choice, yes.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Council, is there any further discussion or comments that you wish to make before you vote? Councilmember Ennis?
I'd like to say that we've worked on this for two years, or we haven't. We've had our team working on it for two years, and our intention was to simplify and bring an end to the confusion. It was never one to make anybody pay more, make it harder on anybody. So it's been our intention all along is to bring some closure to this mess and move ahead. So I just wanted that said out front.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Any other comments or questions, Council? Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
I abstain.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
With three yeses, the motion passes and carries, and ordinance number 2019-40 will be placed on the September 24th agenda. Folks, it is 8:30, and we are going to take a five-minute break. It is 8:30, and we're adjourned, or we're recessed, recessed, sorry. Yeah, we've gotten one item on the agenda, Council. It is 8:36, we are back in meeting, and I'm going to give everybody a heads up, I was trying to kind of, we're going to talk about a couple of things. The next item on the agenda is that we're going to do 5G, the Cultural Arts Master Plan. After that, we are going to do the consent agenda. Colin, you taking notes up there? After the, so we're going to do the Cultural Arts Master Plan, we're going to do the consent agenda, then we're going to do Quick Trip, sorry, my bond guys walked out, so they got bumped, Quick Trip, and, or Q, what is it?
Quick Trip.
Is it Quick Trip? Okay. And then after that, we're going to do the bond assessment for the drainage. So we're going, and then we're going to see what time it is and regroup. Okay, so we are on item 5G. Item 5G is about the middle of page two of five. Receive presentation and discuss the Cultural Arts Master Plan. And we have the Chair of the BAIPP Commission, Ed Skarnulis.
Wow, what an intro. Thank you very much. And I'd like to do just a very brief history of how we got here, and then read a statement that was prepared by the BAIPP members last Wednesday. "In early 2018, there was a growing awareness that while we have a thriving community of visual and performing artists, the different organizations often existed in isolation from one another." One of the phrases that gets used to describe that are silos, and that was an issue. "The city manager and staff were asked by the mayor and council to write a request for proposals to be shared with organizations who might be interested in helping our city develop a master plan for future development of the arts in Bastrop. The Arts in Public Places Board formed a task force of 12 people representing various interests to review and recommend an applicant who would carry out the requirements in the RFP. Go Collaborative was hired by the council and for the past year and a half has worked on a master plan which you have in your packets. BAIPP members have read the proposed plan and met several times to discuss the comments, I'm sorry, to discuss its contents. Last Wednesday, the board requested that I present their findings, which are as follows. The BAIPP unanimously endorses this Cultural Arts Master Plan as a way forward to develop the cultural arts in Bastrop. The plan uses a broad brush to guide the vision and coordination of the arts and potential operational way forward, with many options for the city council to use in this living document and make choices that are appropriate for our city. BAIPP stands ready to assist with implementation." And I was going to start out by reading the plan, but it's got 180 pages.
But Dorothy wouldn't let you, would she?
And I would be in serious trouble with several people up here in front of the room.
So I have one comment, because, and everyone is shocked, I am sure. And it is not directed towards you, but I need to go on record. When I got to page six of this plan and saw that there was a letter from the mayor, it was very shocking to me, because I've never seen that letter, I didn't write that letter, and nobody ran that letter by me. And I am not happy with that, because if you read the letter, it could make my fellow council members believe that I have read this entire plan and think it's wonderful and think that you ought to approve it. So I am requesting that the letter from the mayor be removed. It's not that, I'm not saying that I wouldn't eventually write something along those lines, but I believe it is very presumptuous of me as mayor to have not seen this letter, have it be in the document, and I want my other council members to know that we're all a team, and we haven't adopted it till you guys vote on it. So if you want to change and make that letter be from Ms. Osgood that was the consultant, if it wants to come, if you want to revise this letter to be from the, from BAIPP as a chair, I don't care if you want to replace it with something, but I am extremely uncomfortable in asking that page six be removed from the plan. So that's my little two cents. So, Council, do you have any, or, Mr. Skarnulis?
Well, I think I speak for BAIPP. We have always understood that this is Bastrop City Council Plan. This is not, we don't own this plan, and the issue tonight, or the goal tonight, was for you to just accept the plan, and I think it's perfectly appropriate to accept it with at least that modification, if not more.
And I'm fine, to your point, I loved the statement that you read, I was thrilled to see it as a part of the staff report. That would have been a great cover letter for it. Hey, Council, you contracted for it, here it is. BAIPP's done some due diligence, and we're giving it back to Council to move forward on it. I just don't want anyone on Council to think that I had presumptively assumed that you were going to be okay with each and every document. And then the other part of it was, I really appreciated the fact that you said, in my mind, this is kind of a skeleton, and we'll put the meat on the bones the way Bastrop wants to put the meat on the bones.
Exactly, yes.
Councilmember Ennis, as the liaison to BAIPP, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I, on BAIPP's half, I want to say that they were not aware that you had not seen that letter, so apologies from that standpoint, but they've worked hard on this, they've contributed a lot. It is a recommendation for us to determine where to go. I want to compliment Chief Altgeld and great storyteller Colin Garra for their help in guiding this through, and our Chair, Mr. Skarnulis, for his hard work. But there's a lot of hard work on behalf of the commission in this report.
Absolutely. And then, of course, there was that little surprise announcement back earlier in August that the Art Institute was coming, and that's certainly something that will be impacted as we put some meat on the bones and incorporate them into our community. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ennis, are you?
I don't know where we go with this, but I do, I would recommend that before too long, we have a workshop to review the plan and decide a direction.
I think the city manager would like to make a suggestion.
It is on your agenda this evening for BAIPP to do what they're doing, and that's to make a recommendation. It would be our suggestion that on the September 24th, you accept the report so we can pay the consultant, and it does become ours, and then at the 1st of October, we can certainly workshop it so that you can give some direction back to BAIPP for them to then know what to do with it.
Councilmember Ennis, is that okay with you?
Sounds perfect.
Okay, so Council, it sounds like what's before us, because this is a work session item, so there isn't anything for us to take motions or action on, but it sounds like the direction that we're given, the city manager, is to place this, the Cultural Arts Master Plan, as recommended by BAIPP, on an individual consideration item on the September 24th agenda, and then look to the city manager to find an empty day, if we have any, in the next two months, to have a workshop and start taking next steps with the plan. Mr. Skarnulis, outstanding job, I really appreciate. And if you are on the board of BAIPP and you're in the room, would you please stand up so we can? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Moore, thank you guys so very much. Very, very much appreciated, and look forward to working with you as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, as promised, we are now going to the consent agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that wants an item pulled from the consent agenda? Is there anyone on Council that wants an item pulled from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you will please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the August 20th and 21st, 2019, special budget workshop meetings, August 26, 2019, board and commission interviews, August 27, 2019, regular meeting, and August 28, 2019, board and commission interviews. Item 8B, consider action to approve resolution number R2019-80 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Con Park Section 1B, 2 and 7, preliminary plat being 117.695 acres out of the Mozeo Rosar survey, abstract 56, located south of the future extension of Sterling Drive and west of Childers Drive, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve resolution number R2019-78 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving blue bonded acres, lots 6A and 7A, block 4, section 1, a replat of lots 6 and 7, block 4, section 1, being 7.404 acres located at 437 and 443 Union Chapel Road, within the city of Bastrop voluntary extraterritorial jurisdiction, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve resolution number R2019-69 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving excess ranch road subdivision, section 1, final plat being 6.284 acres out of the Lehman Barker survey, number 3, abstract 6 and 11.468 acres out of the Josie Manuel Bane survey, abstract 5, located north of FM 969, within Area A of the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you much, Madam Secretary. Council?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson. I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us tonight. We'll see you soon. Okay, as promised, I am moving on to 9B, Quick Trip. I'm in the middle of page three. Consider action to approve resolution number R2019-79 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, allowing an alternative lighting plan for Quick Trip number 4128, being .638 acres of Building Block 119 east of Water Street, .602 acres out of Building Block 118 east of Water Street, .0, I'm sorry, 0.319 acres out of Building Block 118 east of Water Street, and 3.233 acres of the trim subdivision, Phase 1, Block A, Lot A, located at the southeast corner of Jackson Street and State Highway 71, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, setting out conditions, providing for repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. The request tonight before you is for an alternative lighting plan. So in Chapter 14, Zoning, Section 45, it's our outdoor lighting standard section, and it has a maximum lumens per acre of 100,000 lumens, which is the amount of light that can be produced. So for this size site, they can have up to 485, 485,400 lumens for the entire site due to their size, which they're requesting to exceed that by 93,662. In the code, there's a provision that they can propose an alternative light plan that doesn't give too many parameters, other than city council has to approve the alternative plan. What they are proposing is a fee in lieu of $7,500, which is $500 per light, to upgrade 15 Bastrop power and light, existing streetlights, to more efficient lighting fixtures. The site in question is at the corner of Jackson Street and the Frontage Road of 71. They had previously talked about a different location, but this is where they're planning for now. It's a good location for the use. They're also pointing out that there's extra green space with the Frontage Road, right-of-way 71, and also on Jackson Street and Jasper Street. They have three road frontages that also, if you count that into their site total, they would not be exceeding the lumens per acre total. But they also are proposing to upgrade, it's 15 fixtures, BPL can pick which fixtures those are. We talked with the electric company, and $500 is the cost for the fixture and the labor that goes into changing the light fixture. And these are the examples of the kind of the older lights that have, tend to have more spillover, the kind of barn, barn light style, the newer LEDs, you can actually focus the direction of those more. The policy is in Chapter 14, Section 45.5. Previously, the only other plan that's been approved was for Buc-Ee's, which is across 71. They requested up to 25% overage for their side and paid $25,000 for, and it was actually , it's about 50 new streetlights throughout the city. So, any questions?
So the point of the extra right-of-way is... So the point of the extra right-of-way is really that it's not impacting a private residence. We don't allow them to include the right-of-way, but if they did include the right-of-way, they wouldn't even be needing it.
Yeah, in addition, they also do have a, it's called a light study photometric that shows the spillover, that's the direct spillover, and they aren't exceeding the codes on that. This is the kind of ambient, the glow that you see from sites.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Rogers? So if I understand all your calculations right, it's not going to be any brighter than Buc-Ee's is across the street?
No.
Okay. Just making sure I understand.
It'll be less bright.
Well, of course, I'm not saying that. Great question. Council, any other questions for Ms. Bills?
I would say thanks to Quick Trip. I don't need any more nightlights. They'll keep them down low. Thank you.
Absolutely. The applicant's here, if council has any questions for them?
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, and a second from councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or comments before you vote? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. All right, council, we are now going to item 9G. We're on page four of five. It's the third item down. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-43 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Bastrop, Texas Tax Note Series 2019 to be used to fund drainage projects, prescribing the form of the note, levying an ad valorem tax to pay the note, awarding the sale thereof, and enacting other provisions relating thereto, and move to include on the September 24th, 2019, agenda for a second reading. Are you kicking it off, or is anybody doing an introduction?
Yes, ma'am. I think it's me.
All right, you're on.
Dan Wake Miller was specialized public finance, financial advisor to the city. This is the item we discussed last month, limited tax note that was being issued. It's on a seven-year term, $465,000 to fit within the budgeted amount. The good news is, as I mentioned, we took it to a variety of banks. We did not have to apply for a bond rating. They submitted their bids just based on name and credit recognition for the city of Bastrop with a tax pledge. We received five bids, or eight bids from five bidders. Those bidders were Amagi Bank, BB&amp;T, TIB, which is the Independent Bankers Bank, Frost, submitted three different structured bids, and then First National Bank, Texas, also submitted two different bids. As is shown on the board on the screen, those interest rates range from 1.775% up to 2.39%. Our recommendation, I visited with Tracy Waldron regarding these, is to just take the lowest interest rate bid, the 1.775%, and the rationale is, even though others have some optionality, you can pay them off early, the reality is, at 1.775%, you're going to have other issues that we can look to pay off if you have proceeds, but this is extremely low. So we would recommend accepting the bid as presented from First National Bank. Bart Fowler, your bond attorney, is here to answer any questions regarding the ordinance, and I can answer any regarding the bids.
Council, any questions? Any comments? Yeah, she wants to know if you could have smaller font, because that'd make it more fun for her.
More rows and columns. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so one of my questions, I totally understand that we want things to be somewhat vague, because we don't know exactly how all we're going to have things, but I think there's a point that it's so vague that it's too vague. So I just want to clarify something, and it may be a Bart question, but in the, I'm in Section 1, I'm on page 357 of Part 3 of the iPad. I'm in the bottom of, below the wheres is in Section 1, recitals amount, purpose of the note and definitions, and it says that the $465,000 is for the purpose of drainage and flood control improvements, street improvements, and paying the professional services, including fiscal, nice, that would be included, engineering, architectural, and the ever-present legal fees associated with the cost of the issuance of the note. Somebody's got an extra mic on somewhere and it's reverberating. Thank you. The, so my question is, is that engineering of the drainage, does it include construction? Is this only Gill's Branch? Is it every watershed? I would like us to have some sort of idea of, okay, community, we're taking a note for $465,000. This is how we intend to spend it. And I don't know if it's fair to ask you that question.
I know a general answer I can give you, and I know there are specific answers as well, but the general answer is, we wrote it that way to give you maximum flexibility, but you do have a specific project that you're looking at for this money. And I don't know exactly what that is. I'm not sure if Tracy knows that, she may be able to speak to that, but there is a specific project that's going to use up almost all of this. But we wrote it in a flexible way, so if you have anything left over, you can use it on other items, including street improvements.
So can a middle of the road, sorry for interrupting you.
Can a middle of the road be that it's intended for, and is it the Jasper Newton?
Is it Gill's Branch? So XYZ, so can we write it to where it's for this project, but not limited to that project, so that we still have the flexibility, but we've made some sort of commitment of how we intend to spend the money?
Well, in the budget book, we outline exactly how we intend to spend that money. In the document itself, he leaves it very flexible in case we have money left over, we have the ability to spend it in other ways. But in the budget book, it lists the two, the two ways that we plan on spending that $465,000.
And Mayor, in this instance, I don't think there's going to be any money left over, because once half an associate establishes the cost of the master drainage, all of the remaining money will go toward the design of the Gill's Branch drainage project.
So we think this is all design money?
It's going to be the drainage master plan, and what is left, they're going to work toward designing the Gill's Branch infrastructure, because as we mentioned in the budget hearings, we fully anticipate that the Texas Water Development Board is going to have drainage money available in the spring and summer.
And we're trying to be shovel-ready.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so can we make Bart happy and me happy? Because I want to be happy.
It's a suggestion, I think maybe what you're looking for is we say drainage improvements, and say to include the items you're concerned about. We can say to.
Some sort of reference to the master plan. Some reference to the budget fiscal year 19, you know, our fiscal year 20 budget. I'm not trying to mess up the whole deal, but I would, I just, because, you know, yeah, it's detailed in the budget book, but this is kind of cheese stands alone, and if you don't have the budget book, then, you know, then your plan, five years from now, I'm not going to remember what that 465 was for.
You're right. If you add that to include, you know, design, engineering, construction costs associated with a specific project, you're committed to doing that project, and if you have anything left over after you finish that, you can spend it on other items. And you're probably not going to have anything left over anyway. We just like to give you that flexibility, because if you have $5,000 left.
We never know what happens.
Right, right.
Council, are you agreeable to that? Councilmember Ennis?
On something like this, can you say to, find a master drainage plan and, and?
Yes, yes, it can be more than one item, certainly. To include, you know, the master drainage plan and, I usually say, design, engineering, construction costs, the laundry list for a specific project.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Jackson?
I was just going to agree with you. I think that makes it work much better, and I would support a motion to do that with the inclusion of the language that you proposed.
So are you supporting it or making it? Are you making?
I'm making the motion supporting your suggestion.
Okay. So I have a motion from councilmember Ja, oh, city attorney?
Sorry, I don't have a red light. Mr. Fowler and I wanted to make a point regarding the agenda language as written. It says first reading, indicates there'll be a second reading.
Okay.
That's a typo on the agenda. Normally, our charter requires that we have two readings of all ordinances, but Texas state law actually preempts that and says we don't have to. So this is intended to be one and done on the reading of this. So the motion, Mr. Jackson, will be to approve it on first and only reading.
Thank you. I, that was, that was on my notes, and I didn't flip back. So thank you very much, city attorney. So, councilmember Jackson, are you amenable to the only reading?
One and only reading, yes. I'm amenable to that.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Jackson and a second from councilmember Ennis. This would be the only reading of 2019-43 with amended verbiage to include the specific project and still provide the flexibility with any remaining funds. Is there any further questions or comments? Council? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. I was told that you guys also have 9F. You're involved in 9F. They're looking at each other. Tracy Waldron says you are, so you are. So we're going to item 9F, the one right above at the top of page four. Consider action to approve, city attorney, this isn't a note, so this is not asking for a second reading, never mind, city attorney. Consider action to approve resolution number R2019-82 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, expressing official intent to reimburse certain expenditures, including fire pumper truck, fire aerial ladder truck, and self-contained breathing apparatus attached as Exhibit A, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you again. My name's Bart Fowler with McCall Park, Kristen Horton, bond counsel to the city. This is a resolution which only requires one reading. If it were an ordinance, it would require two, which we just discussed. This reimbursement resolution is required by federal tax law, so that you can spend money now and reimburse yourselves later from a future debt issuance. I believe currently it's anticipated to be first quarter of next year. Is that correct, we think? So you can spend the money now on these fire items and issue debt sometime next year, next spring, next, maybe January, February, March, and reimburse your general fund with those debt proceeds. If you don't approve this reimbursement resolution, you'll be prohibited from doing that under federal tax law.
And then, my understanding, the reason we want to do this is we want to be first in line, because they don't have these lined up on a parking lot that we get to just go pick one out. So we, by doing this in advance, other folks can't do this till they get, I'm making sure that the reporters understand why we're doing this. Instead of waiting till October 1st, and it's Black Friday, and everybody's standing in line at the parking lot, we're doing this in advance so that we get the first one that they build. That's why we're doing this, because we need to get the equipment purchased. And on this one, it lists all of the stuff at the top part, and then Exhibit A is like fire equipment, but it's still, we have to do what's in the top part.
That's exactly right, yes. And also, it's worth pointing out, this does not commit you to issuing debt in the future. There's only the option to consider that if you decide you don't want to do that. That has happened in some situations, but this preserves your ability to issue that debt and reimburse yourselves if you choose to do so later.
Okay, so we're trying to get in line, but if somebody happens to give us a truck, then we don't.
You're not going to have to issue the debt, no, that's right.
Okay, any other questions for Bart?
Move to approve.
Second, motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, and a second from councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, are you guys done? Yay, okay. Thank you, thank you very much for your patience. Appreciate it. Okay, now we're going back to page two. We are on item 5F, receive a presentation and discuss incorporated changes to the Bastrop Building Block Code Updates Technical Manual and Pattern Book with Matt Lewis. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Matt Lewis with Simple City Design. We are excited to be here before you all tonight. Bastrop was very clear in its mission and direction for these codes, to create a authentic, geographically sensitive, and walkable community, so much so that you all said, please don't show that on every slide. We believe that we've worked alongside your city staff, your community, your planning commission, the city council, the development community, and the city's attorney's office to create a series of development and urban design standards that are going to lead this community toward the goals established in the direction of the code creation, as well as the ones outlined in your comprehensive master plan and your thoroughfare master plan and transportation master plans. The use of the B3 codes, technical manuals, as well as the pattern book and associated state laws, international code council laws, the community is going to be able to recreate Pete's Shoe Store once again. And the framework which is housed within the codes provides a solid foundation reverting back to the original development patterns that this town created its history off of. For 187 years now, we've been celebrating these blocks, and we believe that together these codes that we're creating with these technical manuals are going to enable quality, long-term investments in this community that will thrive through the good times and the bad times as they go forward. With that, I'm going to run through these codes, and they are in your packet. We are going to be providing a redline copy. We have, we'll have that thing for you first time, excuse me, first thing tomorrow morning, you will have the redline version of the document from the previous version to the current version. And we are working to hire a technical writer to clean up some of the grammatical errors and formatting errors that are in the codes. The content is rich and it's there, and it's going to help us lead toward creating neighborhoods.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
But you know I'm going to interrupt you. One of the things that I absolutely want you to correct is please spell councilmember Jackson's name correctly.
Yes, ma'am. It's already, it's already done.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's get that done. And the other thing I wanted to ask you is, what percent complete do you think these documents are?
At this point, I would probably say 90% complete. We're now going to be checking formatting, making sure there's no gaps, checking grammatical errors, oops, and everything is pretty much cross-referenced. One of the things we are working on is potentially turning the development standards into tables, which would reduce the amount of cross-references, because majority of your development standards are housed within a few tables. And what that's going to allow us to do is to actually reference those table sections rather than cross-referencing alternative articles within the code. It's a formatting item that could be more user-friendly, and, but the overall content is there. We are still working on the character districts. You'll see in the presentation, we're recommending maybe small area plans for those areas. They're so high-level, it's hard to embed all of the standards into the documents, but we did so based on the descriptions that were provided and the work that we went through with the council workshops and the planning joint workshops as well with the planning commission.
Matt, isn't there going to be some additions in the technical manual from Kim Lee Horn relative to the street cross-sections that we're waiting on from Tom Grant?
Yes, ma'am. One other item that we're working on, your construction standards currently do not call out pavement specs for your roadway standards, and we're working on those. We had a call, two calls with Kim Lee Horn and Mr. Jobe this morning as well on these items, and we're getting those drafted.
Okay, I'm so sorry, councilmember Ennis, I failed to see your light go on.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a real concern, because we got these Friday night, and we had a monster packet, like you said, and I don't think any of us have, I'll speak for myself, I haven't had enough time to give it enough attention and read it enough, and your redline would help me digest it much easier, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't just delay this discussion until our next meeting, until we get the redline and you add whatever you, because you're going to be going over stuff that's just, I don't think we can address it well enough in this, in completely, no.
Well, council, is there any other council member that wants to make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. You know, man, I appreciate all the work that's been done, and I somewhat concur with the mayor as well as the councilmember Ennis on this. If we are at 90% of substantial completion, the grammatical areas, errors, the spelling errors, the misprints and stuff become even more important, because we're presenting to the public a document that we're saying is 90% complete and that you've misspelled mode with bold, which carries a completely different meaning. And I don't mean to kick you at all, I just, I think it's just vitally important that we be able to vet this in an appropriate manner by utilizing, and I agree with councilmember Ennis, I think we need to perhaps defer this to a later time, if possible.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Rogers? I also agree with him. It's really hard, I mean, because we've seen this thing several times, so it's real hard to compare what has changed and what hasn't changed without the redlining in it, you know, because you, you know, it's kind of like if you looked at the baby six times, you never notice he grew six inches. So I never, I would really like to see it with the red lines, because I'm lost on what's new and what's in there the last time I looked at it. And of the 203 pages, to councilmember Jackson's point, the, that's. And of the 203 pages, to Councilmember Jackson's point, the, that's, that's a lot to read when you're trying to compare it to 137 pages from May 24th, but what we didn't have in our packet is the PowerPoint summary that you're getting ready to show us.
It was uploaded to Dropbox. I did, this afternoon, I didn't send out an email, but you have it in there.
This afternoon?
That's right.
And that's kind of our point. So Friday night at 9:15, you get 1,600 pages, you're looking at a 203-page document, and the, essentially, I think what you've got here is an executive summary. That's what would have been nice to have had Friday night. Here's, here's my executive summary, and here's the redline. Because I believe part of what Mayor Pro Tim Nelson is saying, and Councilmember Ennis is the, has the journalism degree, is you can, it's hard to get to the content when you're, when, you know, and I had sent you a few corrections, there's links that don't work, so I'm, I was kind of surprised to hear you say you're at 90%. But are you, do you think you're at 90% of content?
Content.
And that's not all yet reflected in the document?
Majority of the content is there, but again, there are, there are some edits that need to be done and some formatting type of items that we're still working on, so.
Mayor and Council, I probably should have framed this when he started. Tonight is not for you to get in the materials of the codes. This was the last gut check on some major issues to make sure that you don't have concerns with it. It has been noticed to go to P&amp;Z on the 26th of September, and this is just a last gut check. He's working on these documents, and the expectation is that when he goes primetime for P&amp;Z to adopt them, that they absolutely better be right. There is a joint meeting scheduled on September 30th for P&amp;Z to then offer their recommendations relative to this code, and then it will be, or has been noticed for the first and second meeting in October for you to read it that first time and then adopt it that second time. So I'm sorry that the inclusion of these massive documents have kind of derailed the intent of what tonight was, but there are some things that Matt needs to vet with you one last time because all of the public meetings that we have had, he's been making these changes as we go. We had a meeting several weeks ago on the technical manual that was very, very helpful with the group of developers and engineers that came, and they, I think up until about a week ago, were still communicating with you, having spent some time with it and offering some changes. And so I think that really tonight was about, here's what the community said, here's what he's including, are y'all fine with that? If you're not, then, then we need to know that. Perhaps we've gotten caught up in the will by giving too much information and not the executive summary that probably should have been included.
And it would have been nice to have, have, have had both of them, but certainly not happy to see it tonight. Councilmember Ennis?
No. I still am not pleased with moving ahead, but I will.
How many slides do you have, Matt?
There are 42. I can go through them really quickly. And it's a substant, I mean, you're writing the, the future of the city through these codes, and we're, we're trying to do as much as we possibly can and keep you all up to speed. It's basically a synopsis of each of the chapters, how everything unfolds, how it refers to state law, what's captured within the codes, but I mean, again, it's, it's at the pleasure of the council.
So, the 42, when was it put in the Dropbox? At some point this afternoon, is how I would say it, sometime today during this 24 hours?
The PowerPoint, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the PowerPoint is today. Is there any days next week? Council, would you like an opportunity to review the 42 slides before we talk about them with the redline, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, so if we have the redline, big document, and the PowerPoint, and now we've got this executive summary, Council, and I'm scared to look at you, are you willing to meet one day next week if she can find a date that we don't already have a meeting and this is the topic? Because it's super important, but part of the problem is it's 9:15 and it's 40 slides. And so it's, it's, we're checking a box and we're not really doing what you really need, which is clear feedback.
I think we're cheating you if we do it tonight. I, I think we need to have clear heads and good timing to do it and to have time to go over the, the PowerPoint slides.
And it's on for a work session, so I would think we can just pick, we can work session anytime, right? You got the copy editor? You got somebody going over it?
Yes, ma'am.
Muy pronto?
Yes.
The sooner the better.
Yeah.
Man, there, there's so much information that we're looking, that we're looking at, and it's kind of hard in a very short span of time for us to make clear, conscious decisions based upon that vast amount of information, and then you want us to cull a herd to figure out which pieces are in there new, which pieces were left in there, which pieces have been modified? It just creates a, an issue with us in making clear, sound decisions. I mean, I don't want to dismiss the work that y'all put forward on it, but by gosh, we're making decisions, as you said, that's going to impact this community for the next 100 years. And we'll make those decisions on good, sound judgment.
Yes, sir.
Matt, are you available on the 17th, which is next Tuesday?
I can make myself available.
I'm thinking he can be available because he said, "I'll make myself available."
Yes, ma'am.
Does that work for everybody, the 17th? Councilmember Rogers is, and Councilmember Jackson is willing to make themselves available. Council, would you consider meeting earlier than 6:30? Does 5:30 work?
I can get off at 5:30.
Okay. Can, can you be here by 5:30? I don't want to put you in a, okay. Are, are you guys good for, okay, so we're shooting for 5:30 next Tuesday. Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
And Jordan, we adore you guys, but we, we got to make good decisions, and we got to have good information to make good decisions.
Absolutely. We want to enable you all to do that. I apologize for the late.
And so we'll all now check the Dropbox, and if we have questions, Council, I would encourage you to be shooting emails to Matt and asking questions between now and the 17th, and then we can have a very productive discussion.
Yes, ma'am, sounds great.
So he's going to be dropping, in the Dropbox, give us the redline, or is it going to be red?
It'll be in the Dropbox tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Absolutely. We'll send it to you all tonight. It'll, it'll be sent to you tonight.
Okay. Okay, and Mayor Pro Tim Nelson is confirming that this presentation that's around 40 slides is in our Dropbox now?
Yes, ma'am. I uploaded it this afternoon.
Okay. Well, and he's pointing at it to, like, we, we're double-checked it out. Thank you very much, Matt. Thanks, Jordan. Thanks, Matt. Okay. Jordan, oh, she's, she's still back on George Hyde. She called you George Hyde. Okay, Council, we're going to jump over to the items for individual consideration and try to take care of some of the ones that we have to do to have the public hearing. Item 9A is the appointments. Colin, I know I'm jumping all around, can you get to 9A? And Colin, the clicker's over there, but there's not that many. If you'll do it for me, we'll be fine. Okay, we're on item 9A. I'm in the middle of page three. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-83 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming board appointments of the mayor as required in section 3.08 of the city's charter as outlined in Exhibit A and establishing an effective date. Okay, let's go. So today's September 10th. Rock and roll to the next page. You'll see, you guys were there, we did interviews on the 26th and 28th. These are the things that I try to do when I go through my application review. A leftover goal from last year was to try to get the applications where we can fill them out online. We didn't complete that, so that's a goal for us for next year, and City Manager, I'd really appreciate if that could be on our work plan. That would be helpful for folks because I can get them on the phone, but I can't always get them to come fill out the application. As an overview, we know that we have a number of boards that meet regularly, and then we have some boards that meet as needed. Our as-needed boards are Ethics, Construction Standards, and the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Our Construction Standards Board has been meeting quite a bit, and they will continue to do that, to go over the I-codes, but once that gets done, they'll get back to where they, they won't be meeting that often. The other thing that we know now is that the Cultural Arts Master Plan recommends an arts commission, and that the Bastrop Art in Public Places be a committee under that. Since that, since we haven't workshop that, we haven't finalized that, we're still working with the Bastrop Art in Public Places, but we all know that this is the year that that is likely to transition. At this point, we're going to jump into the assignments or the appointments that I've made. You guys all met. Mr. Bailey, he is an expert in blacksmithing. I have him in place three, and Kesa Picas in place five. You will see that on all of these, I have, I show where they live and when their term ends, because sometimes they are coming onto a three-year term, and sometimes they're filling a place that is an unexpired term. So I've tried to be extremely careful about that, and that is noted. Since you guys interviewed him, and in respect for time, I'm going to really be zipping through these, and if anybody has any concerns or questions, please shout out. The next page shows the appointments for Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. By statute, these are two-year terms, there are seven people on the board, there, the odd-numbered places come up in the odd years, and the even-numbered places come up in the even years. Each one of these is a reappointment. You will recall in 2017, the council at that time asked me to serve on that board. I have found it to be beneficial as mayor to be on that board, so I am reappointing myself and reappointing the current treasurer, the Ron Spencer, who has been involved in some of the executive search committee, and also the chair, Catherine Nash. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Mayor, to be clear, your, your place one does not place you as council liaison, but actually is a member.
That is correct. I am, I serve as a board of director. That's correct. Thank you for that. So I, I vote. And I will be real honest with you, Council, I generally do not make motions and do not make seconds to try to continue to have a little bit of separation with those boards, but I do vote. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. It is an actual one of seven board members. The next board is Fairview Cemetery. Everyone remembers Sweet Miss Snyder, and I put her in place one, and reappointing Tom Scott to place five, and I would just say that the fire ants at the cemetery better watch out. Moving on to the Historic Landmark Commission, I am appointing Pablo as the design professional. The Historic Landmark Commission has some very specific requirements, and it turns out, even in a town of 8,000, to be a designer that lives in the historic district, that owns the historic house. You start narrowing down the folks that are available to perform that duty. So although Pablo is on planning and zoning, I am appointing him separate of planning and zoning to be the design professional on that board. I am reappointing Ms. Witten, and I am appointing Cheryl Long as an owner of a historical residential structure in place seven, as that position was open as well due to somebody, Mr. Crawford resigned a few months ago. Moving on to the next board, that's the Bastrop Housing Authority. On this board, I make appointments, you guys confirm, and we're done. They have to do everything according to the feds, they, they have their own rules that they follow. We don't have a liaison on that board, we, we rock and roll from there. All of these folks wanted to be reappointed, and I'm reappointing them. Zipping over to Hunter's Crossing, there's a topic we haven't talked about for a whole hour. I am reappointing Rick Womble as the commercial representative. The Hunter's Crossing Board also has requirements of, there's a council member position, there's a residential, there's an at-large, and position three is someone who owns a commercial business within the boundaries of Hunter's Crossing. I'm reappointing Rick Womble. If we go to the library board, we interviewed Mary Jo Jenkins. We did not interview Jennifer Leisure. At the time that we did interviews, I thought the person in that position was going to apply for reappointment. She, I, it was very sweet. The note that she wrote me was, "I volunteered to be on the board, and now I'm volunteering for someone else to be on the board." Jennifer Leisure just recently retired. She was a third-grade teacher at BISD for a very long time. She's been very involved in the community. She used to live over on Hill Street, and she just bought a house over in Pecan Park. I think she'll be a great addition to that board. This says note, place six pending. There is a person who's currently serving in place six, and I think she's on vacation, and I want to visit with her because I don't want to replace her if she wants to be reappointed, but I am putting out feelers in case she does not want to be reappointed. The next one is the Main Street Board. Main Street Board has nine positions by their bylaws, and they had a number of vacancies. We interviewed lots of people about this. This is one where some of these, the one person who's being reappointed is Terry Lynn Moore. She is currently serving as the chair. She will be serving, if you guys confirm the appointment, the second year of her two-year term as the chair, and hers reappointment ends in 2022, but there, you'll see a mixture of dates, and again, it's whether it's time for their place to be reappointed or if it is filling an unexpired term. Steph Lewis, you guys interviewed her. She is employed by Film Alley. I've already talked about Terry Lynn Moore. Melinda Ortega owns a business on Main Street, the Swole Sisters. Nancy Wood, we all know, previously served as the Main Street Director. Rhonda Potter lives and works downtown, and I think most everybody knows Ms. Potter. And Mr. Sarnulus is no longer going to be the Chair of BAIPP and has expressed an interest to be on the Main Street Board, and I think he would be a great addition to that board. Speaking of the Sarnulus', if you move on to the Parks Board, I am reappointing Mrs. Sarnulus to place two on the Parks Board. She's done a fantastic job and most recently been working on the Bird City application. For planning and zoning, we have three positions available. I am reappointing Cheryl Lee to place one. Place two, I'm appointing Ishmael Harris, and place four, I'm appointing Glenn Johnson. I think most, we interviewed all of those individuals on the Construction Standards Board.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, just a point of reference for the place one person, it's noted as North Park, and I think we had no discussion that that would be North End.
Yes, but she wants it to be called North Park, and I did that for her.
Okay, well.
Because it's my appointments and my person, and I, I didn't, I didn't want her to call me and go, "You know I don't like it being called North End."
Okay.
So since it's her house and where she lives, I made it North Park.
Right, but when we vote on it, I, I just want you to know that it probably won't be North Park.
But we're not voting on that, we're voting on the people. So you would be voting on Cheryl Lee, just for clarity, okay?
For clarity, I understand that, I just, you know, since it's called that and it hasn't officially become that, but she may want that to happen, but.
We don't have Piney Ridge and a whole lot of others. That's how she refers to where she lives, that's why I listed it that way. So on to the Construction Standards Board, I will tell all of you guys that I am voluntending them because they are meeting quite often. Mr. Jones says that they're doing a fantastic job. None of them filled out an application, and I think that's because they're too busy meeting to fill out the application. So I'm letting them serve until one of them says, "I don't want to serve anymore." I, I think they'll be fine, they've been doing a great job. Moving on to Ethics, we had one vacancy. Judge Dugan, we all know, and, and I personally love and adore, and he has recently moved to Main Street. He is the respected 423rd District Court Judge, so I would like to appoint him to the Ethics Commission. That is a commission that only meets when there is, someone has filed an ethics violation. Quite proud that they have not met in a very, very long time because everybody's minding their Ps and Qs. For the Zoning Board of Adjustment, I am appointing James Crouch to place one, and Gary Moss. He and his wife Danny have moved here two years ago, year and a half ago. Their house was on the Christmas tour, lots of people know them. He's got an extensive construction background. Zoning Board of Adjustments only meets when there is a pending case. The next slide will show council liaisons. This is a position that I created back when we made the first appointments. This will be the third year that we have a council liaison. I would like to clarify the difference between a council liaison and an ex officio board member. An ex officio board member is someone who has a position on a board because of the position that they hold. For instance, there could be a board that says, no matter what, it's going to be the county judge, the city mayor, and the city manager. So whoever happens to hold those elected, elected and hired positions would automatically be on that board. But then, once you are that person and you're on the board, you are like any other board of director. A liaison is defined in the dictionary as a link of communication between two groups. You are not a board member. You are not making motions, you are not voting, you are not adding items to the agenda. The intent of the council liaison was we had boards that had never interacted with council members because council members weren't going to the boards. They were kind of out on their own and whatever staff person was assigned to them was the only way we ever got feedback. We, as the council back in 2017, said, "These boards are important. We have information that needs to be going back and forth." When we did the interviews, we know Mayor Protem Nelson asked every single person we interviewed, "What do you think is the importance of the boards?" And I believe consistently said many different ways was communicating back to the council the wills of the community because the six of us cannot interact with 8,000 people. It just cannot be done. But the more people we have interaction with. So it's important to note, and I appreciate Mayor Protem Nelson making the difference. I'm shown as the council liaison for BEDC and Library. I am a board member of BEDC. I am a council liaison to the library board. I attend their meetings. I review the packages. The only time I talk is when they say things like, "Hey, could you think we could get that on the agenda?" Yes, we can. One time there was a discussion about, "We're having problems with the computer." I came back and submitted to the city manager, "Can we please have someone come present at the library board?" So we are a link of communication, but we should not be as council. The only thing that you can take to the board is something that this council has said, "Hey, council member Ennis, we have an agenda item and we want you to tell BAIPP to do this, that, or the other." But you, if you are bringing a message to the board, you can only do that if you have been authorized by this council to do that. It is an information transfer. So, long story, but the assignments for this, this 2019-2020 is I will continue to be a board member on BEDC. I'll continue to be the liaison for the library board. Mayor Protem Nelson will be taking care of planning and zoning and construction standards. Council member Ennis is going to continue with BAIPP, which may evolve into cultural arts master, cultural art, whatever they're going to call it. And the Historic Landmark Commission, council member Jackson's been assigned to Parks and Recreation. Council member Peterson has agreed to be the liaison for the cemetery. And council member Rogers asked to stay on Main Street. There's a lot of stuff going on and her experience with that is going to be outstanding. I did not assign people to ethics, zoning board of adjustments, and housing authority because we never have. And I also want to note that council member Rogers and Mayor Protem Nelson are actual board members of the Hunter's Crossing Board as well as the city manager serves on that board. She is somewhat of an ex officio. She has that, but you are on the board because you're the city manager. You're not on the board because you're Linda Ullman. That, that's my point. You are serving, the city manager has a role on that board. So, my favorite slide of all, flipping on to the next one, is of the 33 appointments that you have seen on the previous slides, 36% of the people have never served on a board before. 39% of the people live in the downtown, proper downtown area. 43% live in other than downtown, and that would include the North End district of the B3 codes. 18% of the people live in the ETJ. 48% of the people are male and 52% of the people are female, which is as close as I can get with an odd number. I respectfully request that city council confirm these appointments.
Mayor, a sole move?
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from council member Ennis. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
First of all, I appreciate the compliment, but I prefer to be known as Mayor Protem Nelson rather than Mayor Pro Nelson.
Can I put Mayor?
Yes, I appreciate the compliment and you can come to me for guidance any time.
Thank you. No good deed goes unpunished.
But I also want to commend you on the effort that you put forth every year on this. I think engaging our community through our volunteers is outstanding and it provides us such a great voice around the community. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
I appreciate that, but we all know that it doesn't happen unless they agree to fill out the applications. The thanks goes to the community and I want to thank all of you guys for being involved in the interviews. This is the second year that we've done interviews and it sure makes the appointment and confirmation process much easier when you guys have all met with each of them. Any further discussion? Council member Jackson?
Yes, I wanted to commend you also on the appointments and it's a very balanced board and I mean, I'm glad that you got the people to apply that did apply and it's, it's commendable and I concur with the appointment, you know, with the convert, the different people that have been appointed and it's good to get the new blood as well as the people that have been involved in the past.
Thank you very much, council member Jackson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Council member Ennis?
Yes.
Council member Jackson?
Yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel, while we're on boards and commissions and due to the lateness of the hour, I would like to propose that since we're meeting on the 17th, can we get an update on the board and commission ordinance and do the ordinance next Tuesday? Is that, all right. So that means that 5C and, and honestly, this is something we can talk about. Normally, we workshop and then at the next council meeting, we do the ordinance. This one, we were doing the workshop and the ordinance in the same meeting and honestly, the city manager had promised me it would be done before October 1st of this year and that's what was pushing that. The reality is we've, we've done two, two rounds of board appointments without having the ordinance. So I would like to make the proposal that we're workshopping the codes and we just workshop boards and commissions and then at the appropriate council meeting, then we bring back the ordinance. Is that agreeable to everyone? Okay. So we have taken, we have pushed 5C and we are pulling 9L. On 9L, city attorney, on page five of 24 in section five, there is a word I have never heard before, body monthly. So you might, you might take a look at, at that one. And, and counsel, one thing that you need to be thinking about is that one of the biggest things we need to discuss is term limits for board assignments because we, we, we've never voted on that and that will be a big item of the, for the workshop discussion. And so I would encourage you to read through the ordinance included in 911 because it will help you have a, a good discussion on the workshop for boards and commissions. You'll know what the items are that we need to talk about. Okay, so we took another item off the agenda. Yay! Back over to individual consideration. If somebody will help double check me, I think we have 9C, 9D, 9E, 9H, I, and J left. City manager, are there any of those that can be pushed to another meeting?
So, Ms. Waldron, can you come to the?
I think Ms. Waldron said you can push 9E. The investment policy does not have to be done prior to?
Well, so that may not be Ms. Waldron's decision.
Oh.
So.
She was close.
The request has been that we deal with the financial policies and purchasing policies as separate items. And so the, the investment policy, investment strategies of 9E, is that not tied to the, no, that's separate?
No, I just meant we can bring it back at 924 and it's a, it's a resolution, so it would be fine.
Because it's a resolution, okay.
So 9E we can push to the 24?
You can.
Okay, consider it pushed. 9E pushed.
So 9H is a very quick item. House Bill 3167, y'all appreciate, has to have an ordinance behind it. We told you we would find things as we went. We've been doing these standards for years. You've never adopted them. We just need you to adopt them so they are in compliance with House Bill 3167. So that's a quick item. 9I is the license to encroach for Main Street. We need to get that resolved so we can move on with some easement acquisitions that we need to do. The master fee schedule needs to go so we can get it adopted by the end of the year.
Okay, let's just jump into them. It's 9:40. Do you guys need a bio break? All right, let's rock and roll. I am going, I'm just going to start on 9H because I happen to be on that page. I'm on page four, I'm in the middle. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-45 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the Bastrop Power and Light Electrical Service Standards for Underground Electric Secondary Service, attached as Exhibit A. The Bastrop Power and Light Electrical Service Standards for Underground Electric Primary Service, attached as Exhibit B. And the Bastrop Power and Lighting, Power and Light Electrical Construction Service Standards, attached as Exhibit C, in compliance with House Bill 3167. And providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, or repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the September 24th Agenda for Second Reading. Mr. Joe, Ms. Ullman?
I, I think I just gave you the presentation.
All righty, there we are. I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
I am officially closing the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments before we get a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Is this a draft only because it has not been adopted by council?
Yes, because we've been doing these for several years. They have traditionally, because it was BPNL, it was just signed off by the city manager and the director of BPNL, which in this case was Curtis Irvin and Mike Talbot. But due to the change of House Bill 3167, it is very clear that it requires some kind of legal ordinance or statute that we refer to. And so by you adopting this by ordinance, that meets the requirement. So if we use these service standards as a basis for disapproval of any kind of public improvement plan, it would stand up in court because we could reference a ordinance. Hence why we're asking you to just adopt it by ordinance so we can check that box.
But up until this point, these, these are just considered standards and not policy. So we're, we're making these policy.
You're making these policy because House Bill 3167 now requires you to do so.
Okay, I wanted, I wanted to be clear. And so for, for, well, you didn't answer my question. I was going to pose that question to, to the city attorney. Okay, thank you.
So is there anything you want changed on the wording or anything?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it, the end of it, it's, it's, at each one of the standards, it, it references that the policy can only be changed, let me get the wording correctly in there. Bear with me, I apologize. Anyway, waiver changes, this policy must be approved by the director of BPNL and write in advance of the court to change or waiver. By, by right, the, the director of public, of the, of BPNL can't change policy. So we need to really change that wording.
We can delete that. That was the way these worked until House Bill 3167 required them to be adopted by ordinance. And now any change that happens by the director of BPNL, if you do not include it in the ordinance, it does not count and would not be used as a basis for denial. So therefore, it would be nothing more than a suggestion. So if it was important to Mr. Irvin, you would have to approve the ordinance. So we can, we can remove that because that no longer works thanks to House Bill 3167.
That'll work. Thank you.
Council member Rogers?
I move to approve with the changes that Mayor Protem has suggested.
I have a motion to approve with the, approve the ordinance with removing the policy line that's at the bottom of the pages.
Second.
I have a motion from council member Rogers, a second from council member Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Rogers? Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Council member Jackson?
Yes.
Council member Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. I'm on 9I. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2019-87 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a license to encroach at 702 and 704 Main Street and providing for an effective date. And Mr., council member Ennis is recusing himself. Sorry about that, folks. Okay, who's presenting? Mr. Joe, Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones isn't here, he's.
He's actually sick. He's actually sick today.
Oh. Well, I'm glad he kept his germs at home, but I hope he gets better soon. Okay, you're on, Mr. Joe.
Basically, and you have this in your packet, but there's a, there'll be a small encroachment and you can see on this exhibit here, this is the old museum for 702 and 704 Main Street and maybe this picture's a little bit clearer, but you can see where the, where the property line and how their pavement and parking encroaches into the right of way, right? As part of their ability to get a CO, this was something that we had to finalize tonight so that it can be issued a CO from this point.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Joe?
I do. Or notice this sent out to, to neighbors across the street next door that these, that these encroachment applications have been made?
No, sir.
And I guess my concern is because during the pop-up project, we had somebody across the street from there who were greatly concerned that they were going to lose their flower bed or some sort of planning they had there. Is, would this allow them a mechanism to, to save their plantings or gardens there? Or is this a?
What it, what allows you to do is use the right of way until we need it for improvements.
So I think for, Mayor Protem Nelson, because I've talked with those folks extensively, I think we need to be clear, the license to encroach basically says, "I, property owner, acknowledge that I have built something in your right of way and you, the city of Bastrop, with 30 days' notice can come wipe out whatever I've put there."
That's correct.
So it doesn't, this permit doesn't mean that all of those improvements are always, always going to stay. It means that we are acknowledging that they are acknowledging they're in our right of way.
That's right.
Am I understanding that correctly?
That is absolutely correct. And this property, before we, we originally did the Form 8 Code, it had some parking requirements that they couldn't meet due to the hardship of the ledge there. So that's, that's why this originally got started.
Mayor Protem Nelson, I do want to add that we have not finalized the actual construction of Main Street and so it's possible that we'll have to go back to, to this very item that you're approving tonight in 30, 45, 60 days and make some adjustments once those final construction documents are completed. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I also want to acknowledge the fact that the encrochements that are being asked for here are hardscape as opposed to the softscape and landscape from across the street. And given a 30-day notice of utilization of hardscape has a different, carries a different context than it does for.
That, that's absolutely correct. And there was the, this is truly public parking and it's being used for a public purpose, which is why you would allow it, counsel.
Great.
And for the house across the street, if they were applying for a CO, they would have to get a license to encroach. Like, there really should already be one, but there's not one, but they're not having to apply for one because they've already got their CO and they're already in the house.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
It's just, yeah.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from council member Rogers?
Second.
He beat you. I have a second from council member Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Council member Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The Resolution 2019-87 passes with a 4-0 vote with council member Ennis recu, having recused himself. We're moving on to 9J. Consider action to approve ordinance 2019-42 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Appendix A, the master fee schedule for the city of Bastrop, attached as Exhibit A, providing that other fees not listed but now charged pursuant to other ordinances and resolutions shall remain in effect until transferred to the master fee schedule by amendment, excluding Sections A 13.02 and A 13.07, providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, or repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the September 24th, 2019 Agenda for a Second Reading. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so the, the only changes to the master fee schedule are, there is a new section, all of the library field, fees were never in the Appendix A and so we've added all of their fees that they are currently charging and also the new fees that will go into effect on 1-1. And we made sure that the ordinance specifically specifies the effective date on those fees because those fees are delayed. The rest of the fees are actually effective October 1st. The planning and zoning, the development department, they've gone in and put in all their fees so that they are actually included in this master fee schedule. And the solid waste fees are increasing 5%. This is a pass-through from our third-party provider. So those are the other fees that are changing.
Counsel, any questions about the master fees? Mayor, I'm sorry, council member Rogers? Nope, she turned a light. Oh, go ahead.
I'm confused. So the only ones that have changed are the ones you've got redlined.
Yes.
All the rest of them, okay. I just want to make sure you said, thank you.
Council member Ennis, you going for the light? Oh, okay. There, one, one comment, there was a, I had a discussion with somebody about the conditional use permit seemed high and my comment on that was that honestly, with the codes that we're adopting, you really shouldn't need a conditional use permit. And I believe that's the logic behind making it high. And I believe that's the logic behind making it high. Is that correct? Okay. All right, I'm happy to.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Ms. Waldron, back on the boards and commissions, because I know that you're going to be working on that, there's one slide that says three, it types out the word three, and then in parentheses,
It's already been fixed.
Okay, I didn't know, I wanted to make sure y'all had found that. I couldn't remember if I had sent that to you or not. Okay, I'm going backwards. I think we have finished all of page four. On five, we still have to do the executive session. And on page three, we have nine C and nine D left. You guys think that's the truth? Because we pushed nine E off, and I got checks by everything else. Okay. We are going to, oh, and then this was a question. Should we do the tax rate before the budget, or it doesn't matter?
No, it does matter.
It does matter. We got to do the budget first.
Correct.
Always trust Ms. Waldron. All right, we are starting with nine C.
No, about that.
Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance Number 2019-38 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas adopting a budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020, which is October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, attached as Exhibit A, providing that expenditures for said fiscal year be made in accordance with said budget, providing a separability clause, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the September 24, 2019, agenda for a second reading.
Mayor, Council, there has been some questions about the fact we have not updated some of the pages in your budget, so I want to offer some clarity about that. And then the mayor and I talked about a way that I think going forward next year will make this easy. Tracy's provided you the pages where numbers changed, so the budget piece that you're actually going to be adopting by ordinance relative to the numbers, she's going to talk to you about. There are non-numbered pages that you are owed that you will get September 24. And that is, we're breaking out the org chart into three different individual charts. We need to update the work plan for 2020. Cabinet and I met on that Monday, worked through and made sure we've got all of that knitted up. We're finalizing performance measures. We've got one more meeting next week. Those will change some pages. On the 24th, you will get those pages which are non-budget numbered, based on the policy changes that you may or may not make tonight to the financial policy or the purchasing policy, which are referenced in the reference section. We will update those. So on the 24th, you will get a complete document. Part of the challenge you gave us last year was to get a final budget well before November. You will have the budget, all but for an updated letter from me, which I will do in October, and you will get by the end of October in a bound budget copy. So the conversation the mayor and I had this afternoon was, next year, we'll give you the documents so you can sense where we are, but we'll just deal with the number pages until we get everything fleshed out, and then we'll bring you back final non-numbered pages one time. And the reason for that is it's cumbersome, because if you look at the beginning of the document, the table of contents, and anytime we move something, it changes the numbers, and then you got to change how it gets copied. It's just a day-long process. So I just told Mary we would do that one time. So that's why you don't have a final document. She's going to talk to you just about the numbers, because that's what you're going to be adopting, and then on the 24th, we'll bring you the non-numbered stuff y'all have alerted us, fixed.
So we're basically, next year in the process, we'll be focusing on more of like Excel sheets. And when we're done with the Excel sheets, then we will get a final document with the, with the meat on the bones and the descriptions around it. Because what I hear you saying is, when I'm walking around with this book, I know very well there are a whole lot of corrections on the Word narrative portion, because you guys haven't, you haven't updated that yet. The other thing is, Council, I would like some feedback on, she's saying we'll have it on the 24th. If we're having it on the 24th, that means that according to our current process, we would get that sometime on Friday. If that is now going to be a lot more information, are you okay with getting it on Friday, or do you want it before that? Councilmember Ennis?
Before.
And that, so before needs to be a day?
As soon as we can get it so that we can have time to really study it.
And I would appreciate if there, when they do do the changes, if either redline it or tag us the which pages have been changed compared to the ones were already read.
Yeah, we really need that.
They're rereading the whole thing and trying to figure out. But I like the way the new, next year's going to happen. I think they'll make it easier on the city manager.
And we need to make it easier on everybody. We're all trying to do the right thing. Councilmember Ennis, are, were you done?
Well, if we had some kind of redline or some notation on what had changed, then it's going to be easier for us to process it in, in a timely manner. Whereas if we're reading it cover to cover again, without knowing what's, because y'all gave us a list of what had changed, but that's not everything that changed in the book.
Those are the numbers that changed?
Huh?
Those are the numbers. I tied out the money.
Well, the money, but there were other things in the book that changed from the last time we looked at it to the one we have tonight.
That we got Friday night.
That we got Friday night. So it's, not everything's noted. So if we could have any things that have changed between now and the next time you give it to us, so we can just whiz through it and look at them, it sure would make life easier and we could process it faster.
Can we have that by next Tuesday, so that they could bring their budget book to that work session, and we could have staff available to change out the pages with the front page of everything that's changing?
The performance measures are the only things that are going to possibly hold us back.
We would have those done, but, okay.
There's really not much left to bring them to change, the performance measures. And we've already updated most of the org charts.
The, the performance measures are in each of the different departments. That's one of the requirements of the GFOA distinguished budget boards, is that they're performance measures. And so part of the process that we're going through is making sure that all of the performance measures that we're doing really do collect the kind of data that we ought to be doing. But everything that we do has to have a process so that they're meaningful and they're right, because garbage in, garbage out. So we're taking this very seriously in attempting to make an honest attempt to get a good year's worth of data on things that matter. So the performance measures are in the, the departmental narrative where we show the individual org charts, and we give a description of what the, the department is and its goals and objectives and what it's accomplished. Those are where the performance measures would be.
Councilmember Ennis, an example is page 88 is the performance measures for Bastrop Power and Light, and that's the one that they have written currently as greater than 60 minutes, and I know in my heart they mean less than 60 minutes for an outage. And so that, that is a, an example of a performance measure for a department that they would have a goal and then, and then judge themselves against.
Do you have to collect this information?
We are, we have not finalized it for every department. Some of them have proposed some things that aren't particularly meaningful, and I'm not going to let them go through, so we're negotiating what those are.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ennis, the floor is still yours.
I'm concerned that this award that we got this past year, and I'm all for applying for it, but that is what I, in my mind, I see is what keeps us from getting it on a timely matter after we pass this thing. And I think it's really important for Council to have a budget book by the first time that we vote on spending money. And I'm wondering whether there is some way to get us that kind of document that we can work from by the first time you bring us something to spend money.
My response to that, sir, would be the document that you approve on September 24 will be 99.5% there, but for the budget memo that I will need to write, and then we will have to just check everything, and then we will bind it. We made an agreement that we would provide it to you in November, and we will certainly beat that by a month. But the documents you approve on 9/24 would be the reference you needed for the first meeting in October, because the numbers will be right.
And they will not change?
Once you adopt it on 9/24, no, sir, they should not change. Because the numbers tonight, once y'all are satisfied this is it, y'all have not given us any more number changes. So the numbers may change only because they're incorrect today, and we're going to plug these right numbers in.
So from the moment we approve it on 9/24, nothing's going to change but your memo?
That's the goal.
Yeah, you're approving the appropriations. That number cannot change without me coming back with another budget amendment.
Okay, that's what I'm, what I'm looking for. Is that satisfy everybody else on the dials?
Yeah, I think it's a process we've gone through. Certainly, we want to offer them enough time to be able to view this and go back to when we're going to file the numbers. But we need to be realistic in our expectations. If you say we can get these numbers by Tuesday, that certainly gives us enough time to, to study and vet through the process.
Yeah, and unless y'all change something tonight, there would be no number changes. The only things that are missing in the documents are just org chart updates, performance measures, those, that's all that's left.
And Councilmember Ennis, Ennis's issue on that, I'm in complete agreement. We need to be able to have something to hang our hat on to. And that's, is that where you're going, Councilman?
And the, and that it's finalized, so we don't have a lingering perception that things are getting changed in the budget after it's passed.
And I would like to, I understand that page 41 is a calendar, and you, city manager, you said we had an agreement that it would be distributed in November. We haven't approved this calendar, so I don't think we have an agreement.
Mm-hmm. We bring the calendar every year.
By resolution or consensus?
It's by resolution.
It was adopted at the first meeting, the only meeting in December, and you do that every year.
Okay.
We'll just be more careful and watch for it next year.
Um, what was my other question? Oh. What are you writing after the 24th that you can't write before?
It is a byproduct of time. Next year, I can probably get that done, but this year, with everything that we're trying to get done by the end of the year, I do not have the bandwidth. Because we're trying to get the codes ready for P and Z and get through all of that, the I codes in November.
I understand. I didn't know if there was something else that was going to change.
It's nothing more than time. Next year, we shouldn't have this problem, but it is.
Because you have a transmittal letter to us.
I have a transmittal letter to you at the beginning, but I need to capture some of the important salient things y'all have done through the adoption.
Gotcha. So that you're not, so that it doesn't say like, "We're going to meet with Trey, we're going to have..."
It will be the, the budget that you've adopted reflecting the values and the things that you feel are important to the community, because I capture the essence of what you're trying to accomplish in that letter. So I've given you, as we came into it where we were, now I have to capture as we go out what you are trying to do as policy for the, the future. So I will take all of the things that y'all have added to, clean that up, not talk about what we're going to do, I'll talk about what you adopted.
Okay, and so the goal would be, for next year, would be that that letter would be ready when we were, when we're voting on it?
That is contingent. This quits moving earlier in the process, but if at tonight's meeting, y'all are still moving huge pieces, then I can't make that commitment.
I got you. Okay, that makes sense. Councilmember Ennis, did you?
I think I'm fine.
Okay. Um, okay, so we've done some talking about next year, but where we are this year is on nine C, and I need to open a public hearing. Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Sorry.
So I just had a quick overview. I gave everybody a copy of this, changes since last budget workshop. I just did a very simple table tying the totals, revenues, and expenses from where we were at the last budget workshop to the budget that's in front of you. And so just to highlight the changes, Hunter's Crossing, we did make an adjustment to their revenue. It had to do with the reclass of the legal expenses that we will be reimbursed from the developer. We have added in since the workshop, the certificate of obligation 2020 for the fire equipment. We wanted to make sure that was actually a part of the budget document moving forward since that was your recommendation. And also on the innovation fund, we added in the BPNL loan for the permit software. And so those are the changes to revenue. As you can see, it ties out to the 4.9 that is now in your all-fund summary page. On the expense side, excuse me, we also added the certificate of obligation 2020 for the fire equipment, 2.8 million. Also added the innovation fund permit software at 30,000. I had a vehicle that we had carried over with BPNL. It actually was received this year. It was budgeted this year, but we were told that it was going to be carried over. So we have reclassed that. It's in fiscal 19 now, so we've taken it out of the fiscal 2020 budget. Hunter's Crossing, Pitt, had a $20,000 adjustment after their meeting, so I've updated this budget book for that. And I also got final numbers for the Economic Development Corporation's budget, so I incorporated their changes.
Okay, so the second column, final budget, is what we should find?
That's in your, in your all-fund summary right now.
No, those numbers don't match. The all-fun, is, did you change all-fund summary since Friday? Because I printed out what's in Friday.
61,678. What's in the?
I, um...
The ordinance is appropriating the 61,678,814.
And this says 61,896, but more importantly, the difference is the economic development number of 5,301,498. This says 5,301,498, but this paper's saying it should be 5,243,898.
Yeah, I know. It's the 5,324. Those numbers are correct, and it's what's being appropriated.
So the all-fund summary needs to be updated with the BPNL number?
Yeah, I thought I pulled what got put in the packet, but, but the ordinance states the 61,678,814, which is correct.
So if, but the ord, but the all-fund summary that's in our packet on Friday doesn't say 61,678,814?
Okay.
It says a different number.
Okay.
So if we approve something tonight, do we need to approve this number, or I, what are we trying to get a motion on?
So the ordinance you're being asked to read for the first time is correct.
Yes.
And on the 17th, the all-fund summary will be updated to reflect that number. It will be one of the changes we'll make in the budget. Okay. But the ordinance that you are being asked to read and approve for the first reading is correct?
Is 61,678.
814.
814.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Rogers?
I'd like to make my opinion known, but the, in next year's budget, by the time we get to the first reading, I want to have the budget finished, so we can vote on something that's final, and this trading pieces of paper, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that. I want it finished. I don't want to vote on something that's not finished. And I'm not directly, I'm actually shoving that the city manager's way, but I just, that's my feeling on it. Makes me very uncomfortable to vote on something that's not complete.
Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, Councilmember Rogers, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find, go ahead.
I wanted to agree with Bill, at least just the numbers part, which I think will be easier with the new way, at least the not switching of numbers. I understand all the words need to fix, but, but I think with the new way that you and the city manager have come up with it for next year might be a lot easier, and it won't seem so.
What we will do is some of these last-minute changes just won't get made, and there'll be a budget adjustment in your first meeting in October. All staff was trying to do was capture the last-minute changes, but if that makes y'all uncomfortable, we will stop 9/1, and you will just get a budget amendment the first part of October, because things are, are always going to be fluid. Like the Economic Development Corporation, I'm not going to throw them under the bus, but they're a separate corporation. Their board makes their decisions, and we get it when we get it. Just like last night, if there had been a change to the transfer that you wanted to make to visit Bastrop, that's your prerogative. So we're just trying to capture those things, but if, if that makes you uncomfortable and that's certainly your prerogative, then we will just hold them, and we will true up at some point time to make them right.
What I was saying is, I think if, if you're, like you and the mayor were mentioning, if you're just doing just the numbers at the beginning, then it won't look like so much, because all that other stuff won't be in there. So we're not saying that. I'm just saying that I think the, the new plan you're coming up with won't seem so wishy-washy, so it might not feel so uncomfortable. So that's what I'm, what I'm saying.
There's also the option that we don't have to do it at the regular council, that it could be done from a standpoint of, as long as there, as I understand it from our attorney, if they're three days apart, you could do it all in one week if you wanted to.
Yes, sir. The only problem is we have to provide notice provisions for the actual public hearings, so it's important that those dates be provided, because we need almost two weeks' notice in order to get the Bastrop advertisers' timeframe worked out relative to when the actual hearing will make the paper and make the notice. So he is exactly right, but the challenge is, is we can't wait until today, I don't So he is exactly right, but the challenge is, is we can't wait until today, I don't think, and make the end of the year without compromising some problems, particularly with the tax rate notice we have to do, which is why we try to get it fixed where it's not moving.
Well, I'd just hate for you to shut things off by 9/1. I think council would be amenable to meeting in a strange pattern in order to give you as much time, but still meet the mark of getting a finalized budget. So I'm just throwing that out there, so when we start planning next year, maybe we can start meeting all the little issues we've got.
Thank you, councilmember Ennis. Councilmember Jackson?
I know it's been an extremely difficult year with all the things that the legislature's done to us, and it's an adjustment for me, getting, you know, back on council again, but it is frustrating in some ways. But I think that with the planning that we're doing now and the discussions we're having, I think next year will be a smoother year, but this year has been really difficult because of all of that. And I'm trying to take that into consideration, but it's still frustrating, though.
I had one question on the, the all-fund summary that we had in our Friday packet. For the, you broke out the Economic Development Corporation separately, because it, it used to be in the special revenue funds, right?
I had it combined, and because it's so large, I felt like it needed its own column.
Okay. Because I know last year it was together in special revenue.
And in the CAFER, it's actually a separate column, so it just makes more sense for it to stand out that way.
Because I, that, I just, that called out, it's like, oh, okay, that, I wonder what made you do it as a separate column, but, okay. And I, I do believe you, but council, page 318 of part two of the iPad version has the ordinance, and she's absolutely right. It's the 61,678,814, which is on this page that she handed out tonight, even though it's not on the all-fund summary that was in the packet. So I just needed to see with my eyes that that's what we were talking about approving. I am on page 318 of packet part two of the iPad version of the PDF file. So while y'all are finding that, I am officially opening the public hearing. Madam secretary, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing. We have officially had the public hearing, and now we are at the first reading of the ordinance. City attorney, do we need to amend anything about the ordinance to not imply that we are somehow approving a whole bunch of narrative words that we all agree were not approving? Or is the ordinance very specific that it's only these two, these, the big round number sorts of things?
I believe, mayor and council, that the entire thing is flexible and subject to change until the final adoption vote, which is one reason why we have public hearings and notices and those sorts of things.
So we can make those revisions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, council, I move to approve with a comment that I wanted to thank the city manager for adding the, the different columns of what's in, in others, and what was in contractual services. You added those pages in there, so I wanted to thank you for that, but I move to approve for a second reading.
I have a motion from councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The, the, councilmember Jackson's cracking me up. Okay, moving on to 9D, are you guys okay? You still with me, 10:20? If you need to go to the restroom, get up and go. 9D, hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-39 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the tax rate and levying ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, to provide revenue for the payment of current expenditures, providing a severability clause establishing an effective date, proper notice in meetings, and move to include on the September 24, 2019, agenda for a second reading. And Ms. Waldron, you're going to tell us that we need to go to the staff report, because the motion needs to be very specific, correct?
Yes.
So you guys need to find that page if you're.
Not the words, not the motion. So all I have is, this is the second public hearing that we are required to hold for the tax rate. Just a, a quick summary. The property tax rate that we are proposing is the .564. Effective rate as calculated is .5322. The rollback as calculated is .5704. The proposed tax rate will generate 307,803 more revenue. Of this increase, 183,488 is an increase of the same properties from last year. 124,000 comes from new properties on the tax roll.
Okay, and the words you're looking for are on page 326 of part three of the iPad packet. Oh, yeah, I'm going to do all that. Thank you very much. Okay, and you're done, because you said all your words. So we're officially opening the public hearing. Madam secretary, do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
No, mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions?
Madam mayor, I move the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .5640, which is effectively a 5.98% increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, council, it is 10:23, and we are going to go into executive session for item 10A. And I will let the community know, those that are still with us, that the other items that are on the work session, the finance, the boards and commissions, we already moved, the Fairview Cemetery, the easement acquis, the other ones, everything else that was left on work sessions, we're moving to September 17th, because we're meeting at 5:30, and we'll just do them then. Is that, everybody cool with that? All righty.
I just had a question. I don't know if we actually ever did the citizen comments that wasn't part of an agenda thing.
Yeah, because I asked her if anybody was signed up for them. I thought I had. Did I, oh, I didn't. Okay. Madam secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizen comments?
No, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I checked it off, and I shouldn't have. We've officially had no citizen comments. So we are go, it is 10:24, we are going into executive session. City council shall convene into closed executive session for an update from the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551 point, y'all need to quit, point, 551.071 regarding cause number 1, colon, 19CV-482, Bastrop Estates LLC versus the city of Bastrop. It is 10:24, and we are in executive session. Okay, council, it is 10:45, and we are back out of executive session into regular session, and we are on item number 11. Take any necessary or appropriative, appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session.
I move to allow the mayor to sign the settlement agreement pursuant to this item on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, and a second from councilmember Ennis, that the mayor be given authorization to sign the settlement agreement regarding item 10A. Is there any further discussion? Madam secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Peterson, we're on item 12.
Item 12. Make a motion to adjourn.
It's 10:46, and we are adjourned. Council will be back together at 5:30 next Tuesday, September 17th. Thank you.